Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the continuing Board of Supervisor meeting from yesterday for Calaveras County. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're here to continue our meeting from yesterday. And on the agenda today, it's listed as Agenda Item 1 on the regular agenda. And that was previous number four on yesterday's agenda. But before we get into that, is there any announcements by the Board or staff? Seeing none, Madam Quirk.
So this item is continued from yesterday. On your agenda for today, it's listed as Item 1 from the Planning Department to conduct a public hearing and adopt an ordinance rescinding Chapter 17 dot 95 and replacing it with a new Chapter 17 dot 95 banning or regulating cannabis cultivation and related commercial activities and certify the environmental impact report.
Okay. Public comment on this particular agenda item has been completed. It's time for Board deliberation and any questions of staff and to address any issues the Board has or staff has. Is there any supervisor that would like to comment on this? I would entertain a motion.
Chair, before we start, I would like to kind of review some of the things that I have found as a result of my doing homework. And to that end, I have, I did commission a group called the Communications Institute to assist me with that. And I had a lot of people that I would certainly like to recognize that they had helped in putting that together. In doing so, I heard that Dr. Murad Gabriel was here in our county for public comment yesterday, and it's interesting because I spent an hour and a half on the phone with the good doctor, and he never mentioned it to me. I personally talked with Bernie Guyant with U.S. Forest Service. He heads up U.S. Forest Service for California. We've heard about Fur Dan in the county. And so I got ahold of Ed Horton, who worked with FMC. He was the project manager for Fur Dan. It was first used in Plymouth, California on grapes. And he gave me the reasoning why it was eventually banned. I've talked to East Bay Mud, CCWD, Murphy Sanitary, Valley Springs, Yvonne West with the State Water Resources Control Board, Griffin Prairie with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Trace Scherr with the Water Board, Gary Liptner with Department of Water Resources, water agencies in Eldorado, Placar, Amador, Tooluma Counties, William Rusamonte with Haida, Stanislaw County Farm Bureau, Sandmackeen Farm Bureau, Calaveras Farm Bureau, farmers and ranchers throughout the valley as well as the mountains. The Water Resources Manager for Sand County. And volunteers have interviewed U.S. Fish and Game, California Fish and Wildlife, and spoke with our legislators, both locally and other parts of the foothill. So as I bring this study forward today, I'd like to remind everyone of a little bit of my background. I was certified in hazmat operations. I did complete training in the environmental crimes for the California District Attorneys Association. I did complete my IIPP training, which is Endless Injury and Prevention. I was an instructor for county fire and CDF on both wildland fire as well as for new fires. I do have ICS training. In fact, my first OES training was done with Kim Zegaris, who was the originator, the original director of OES when it was first formed in California. I've been a strike team leader. My crew was the original, one of the original engines that attacked the Old Gulch Fire in 1992. I was probably fighting fires 30 years ago. I think what we have to really talk about, and we heard a lot of, is it's about the money. But when we passed our budget last year, we had $30.3 million in reserve funds. We had $127 million roughly in our treasury, which is our investment portfolio. I think it's more about the liabilities. We talk about public safety. I'm more concerned about the environmental safety. And for that reason, what I'm putting together or bringing forward today something just got stuck is not new information. It is simply a compilation of all of the information that I have gathered. For those in the public that would like to know where to find this, you can go to www.silentpoison.com. The website is live. There's a PDF file available that you can download the information that's being presented to the Board at this time. But what I'd like to do first is to remind everyone that there's a disaster here in Calaveras County, and it's an environmental disaster. The pictures that you see, especially the first picture on the executive summary, if you don't have one, I've got one here for you, is actually approved grow site. To give you some history over the past several years, Calaveras County has experienced a dramatic increase in the cultivation of cannabis and marijuana. Previous Calaveras County Board of Supervisors approved an ordinance that would permit temporary cultivation of marijuana. This was a huge mistake in ever allowing any cultivation of drug without adequately understanding the impact of such activity on the county's environment, health, public welfare, and safety. It also did not consider the impact of cultivation of marijuana on steep sloping foothills on water quality. Chemicals flowed out from grow sites into the watershed. It should be noted, none of the chemicals have been approved on these crops for growth or pest control. Key findings from the study is that marijuana cultivation has damaged the environment. The study documents how marijuana cultivation has poisoned and damaged other areas over many years. It provides an in-depth analysis of the damage to the Eel River in Northern California, stretching 196 miles in the northwestern portion of the state. The study includes numerous analysis from experts of Stanford, Yale, Scientific American, University of California, and Harvard. Please remember that the Eel River flows to the ocean. It doesn't flow to the drinking water taps in Los Angeles. Ours does. You have one of the world's most fragile erosive landscapes, a landscape that is very easily damaged further. The guerrilla growers are building poorly engineered illegal roads, scraping off forest, and then sometimes putting hastily dug trenches that are just lined with plastic high in the landscape so they can grab any feet water to their marijuana plants, and those that fail taking hillsides down into rivers. Scope and depth of problem is not understood. There are an estimated 1,200 sites, according to law enforcement. California Fish and Wildlife noted recently, speaking about Calaveras County, we're aware of the seriousness of your problem, but I don't know who's going to come in and clean it up. The use of the words overloaded, understaffed, trying to get up to speed, and involving process are common when speaking with state agencies about our county's environmental problems, associated environmental problems with cultivation of marijuana in the county. The numerous environmental violations, local authorities documented what was found on 17 specific sites with chemicals and fertilizers. In fact, one site had 400 pounds of high potency fertilizer in just a half an acre. State of California has issued 157 environmental citations on 30 grow sites eradicated. And all the sheriff's office reported 97 California Department of Fish and Wildlife violations, 29 water quality violations, 24 water rights violations, five Cal Fire Land Conservation infractions were noted at the pot farms. But this is not a complete list of all of the 1,200 sites that have been surveyed, because we really haven't surveyed all of them. The dangerous and appropriate chemicals used by growers is listed there on the next page. These chemicals are damaging to the environment. They're not approved by cannabis cultivation, and some of them are downright illegal. The following list is found on some of the sites in Calaveras County. The billions in cleanup costs, and this is what we need to realize, is that in talking with U.S. Forest Service, they were shut down by OSHA for approximately six months because they did not have adequate safety protocols of their workers in place. These protocols were given to me by the U.S. Forest Service. They're not currently in use in our county, and I am very concerned about the safety of our employees. The reason I say that is because many people have said, have you ever been to a good site? I've been to approved sites. I've been to sites that have been eradicated. I've been to sites that have been post eradication that are still not cleaned up. I would say that 100% of the sites that we've eradicated have never been mitigated. That means that the chemicals, the fertilizers, the contaminants are still sitting on the ground there as a time bomb waiting for this county to explode. And what we're doing is that we've had four years of drought. That was followed by a rain event last year. We flushed some of that into Parte, some of it into Hogan. It got flushed. They realized that. But what they don't know, and the water agencies will tell you this, they're not testing for it, because they don't realize it's there. And that creates a problem, because if they don't test for it, they don't know what to do to clean it up. And the problem then becomes, where does it go? Does it end up in water treatment plants somewhere? Where do we spray most of our treated water right now in Calaveras County? Golf courses. So are we contaminating people who are going out on our golf courses because we are not testing? CCWD said they're testing for what's called a wide range of organophosphates, but not for specific types. That's a very important deal, because if they don't know what they've got, then they're not able to take the steps. And they've also said, in talking with them, that their systems aren't designed. So if you folks understand, when we go to Prop 64 and indoor growing, and they have hydroponic water, and they start flushing it into municipal sewer systems, they start flushing it into their onsite septic systems, and those systems are not designed or engineered to mitigate that problem. All we're doing is adding an environmental loading. See, that's what started this whole discussion with me, is we don't know the scope of the problem. We don't know the level of the hazard that is sitting here in our county, because we really haven't taken the time to look at it. Now, when I look at what the State Water Board released just yesterday, right here, I want to refer to something that is in this Water Board document. It says indoor cannabis, commercial cultivation activities are conditionally exempt under general order. And it also says that indoor cannabis cultivation sites' activities to an onsite wastewater treatment system are exempt. Why? They don't know. They do not understand the depth of the problem. See, this isn't about money, folks. This is about liability. I'm going to continue with what I have here. When you figure that the Butte Fire cost approximately, somebody said 230,000, I'll just drop it down to 200,000 per location to mitigate and deem those properties safe for reentry, most of those costs were recovered from property insurance carriers. Well, who's going to recover it if we have to mitigate this? Using the sheriff's estimate of 1,200 illegal grows possible, then the mitigation costs for these grow sites could approach $240 million. But if we, as I talked to the experts with the U.S. Forest Service, they believe that it could be as much as $2 billion to clean up these sites, just in Calaveras County alone, if we follow U.S. Forest Service protocols. Now, I will admit that only two sites have been cleaned up. Those were the Butane Tanks that we had here. But no site where an eradication has occurred has been mitigated. Water pollution. There's no equal regulations for pot. Marijuana growers are not complying with environmental requirements placed on all farmers in California. They must comply with strict requirements for the application of chemicals and fertilizers. Products must be labeled as approved for use on the agricultural product being grown with the application rates, methods, time of day, wind speed, containment. In the case of chemicals, OSHA compliant safety equipment and blood testing of workers. It's called chem panels. But there's no such requirement for marijuana cultivation. I want to remind everyone, this is something, I come from a farm in the Midwest. When you looked at a chemical or a package, the label's the law. No label has approved for use by marijuana. So vineyards, example, need to complete a 71-page State Water Resources Board Form just to discharge water, while a complete application for a marijuana farm per their website at the Water Board is just five pages. Water testing. Independent experts have conducted random sampling of local ponds here in Calaveras County, and the testing reveals that two of three have found cyanobacteria proven to be a deadly poison to humans, fish, and animals. This is the result of nitrate overloading in streams and waterways. Cyanobacteria is a form of algae that's used as a marker to indicate severe environmental compromise to streams, as in the case of the Eel River. The documented environmental violations, this is in Calaveras County. Diesel fuel in streams, water diversion, clear cutting deforestation, sediment in streams from grading, diesel oil leaking into soil, steelhead and coals salmon impacted. Golden eagles seen in our county landfill where marijuana is buried, and if somebody actually said, maybe we need to test the golden eagles. And of course, the grading with no permits. The Union Democrat published examples of human waste that was funneled down a hillside through a hole carved in a manmade bathroom that contaminated a nearby creek whenever wet weather would pass through. Harmful chemicals seeped into the ground from what remained of inside pesticide containers carelessly tossed into a pile of garbage when no longer useful. Imported soils. County officials have seen the importation of specialty soils. These are soils on steroids specifically designed to grow marijuana contained in bags, not only by the truckloads, but by the truckloads of soil only delivered to sites. In fact, I've got pictures of one. They continue to expand their operations in violation of the urgency ordinance. It's almost as though the urgency ordinance has no bearing on them. Water quality's in question. There's limited testing being conducted by our local water providers to identify if the dangerous chemicals have leached into our local water supply or wastewater treatment I'd like to also remind everyone that the Calaveras watershed, which is District 2, is a unique watershed in California, and that it is not a snowpack-fed watershed. That is rain-fed only. And that means that whatever environmental loading that is occurring up there on those hills, the only way to get it out of there is to flush it. And I can tell you Stockton East is concerned. I can tell you East Bay Mud is concerned. And I would rather see a lawsuit from marijuana growers all day long than see a lawsuit from East Bay Mud. Because if we dirty this ground, and as I talked to Supervisor Chuck Winn from Sandmackeen County, I said, Supervisor, you can either help us to maintain a clean environment, a clean drinking water source for your people in Stockton, or you're going to pay dearly to clean it up and treat it once it gets to you. Which would you rather do? He says that's an intriguing comment. So my recommendations are this. Based upon the findings and the analysis in the report, the following recommendations to deal with the problems identified in the report. We urge elected officials on the state, federal, and local levels to carefully consider the findings of the report and take immediate action to repair that damage caused by cannabis cultivation in Calaveras County and how to return the land to its previous useful condition. Calaveras County ordinance, I would urge to pass the ordinance to ban cultivation of marijuana or cannabis from both open and indoor facilities to the limits allowed. The county should address how to monitor and control waste discharge from Prop 64 growing. The county agencies, such as CCWD, are currently not prepared to test or treat dangerous chemicals that have been found in the production of the product. Most importantly, a great ecological damage has already occurred because of the legal and illegal production. It is clear that the previous Board did a disservice to the citizenry and the ecology of the region by considering only the canopy size without any consideration of the environmental analysis of its production on the local environment. I propose the creation of a task force involving all agencies, federal, state, regional, and local, to work together to eradicate illegal growing, clean up the environment, and deal with the law enforcement and public safety issues. There's a desperate need here for a coordinated response to deal with the problem. It's our hope that the response to this county would be a model for other counties or regions in the nation in coping with the ticking time bomb of an ecological disaster. The contamination of our water supply is to include a declaration of emergency until such time as the scope is fully understood. Water quality analysis. I would recommend the United States EPA undertake a study on the impact of the ecological damage of the water quality in our county and propose steps that should be taken to protect our watersheds and provide a plan for cleanup. This is critically important, not only for our county, but for the millions of Californians and agriculture that depends upon water emanating from our Sierra Nevada watershed. State of California Water Agency should be requesting, be requested by the county with the support of state legislators to take action with the U.S. EPA and working with California Fish and Game. Law enforcement. We recommend the United States Drug Enforcement Administration evaluate any grant money and manpower that is able to support and eradicate illegal production and ensure shutting down these operations, including their complete cleanup. The county should continue to fund contractors to assist with eradication, along with all inter-agency cooperation available. It's not about how much money will come from the state and federal agencies. It's about the political will to develop cooperative efforts using outside manpower and equipment and assisting. This does not include environmental cleanup or remediation within watersheds at this time. We propose also that the District Attorney of Calaveras County work with the United States Attorney and the California Attorney General to prosecute those that have broken federal or state laws and county ordinances, and seek full prosecution criminally and or civilly, and explore seeking funding to pay for the cleanup of the land in our county. This needs to be a true cost recovery. Please understand that you represent 9% of all of the water that is drinkable in California. If this watershed, it isn't just about this watershed. It's about all watersheds in the foothills. Why is it that Alameda County and Contra Costa County have banned cultivation? Because it's a NIMBY. They don't want it in their backyard. But I will tell you, it's more appropriate in their backyard than it is in their water supply. So we can either give them a clean water supply and work hard to ensure that this environment in our county stays safe, or we're going to pay dearly for it later. So anybody that's interested in looking at the study, it is currently online on silentpoison.com. It is downloadable as a PDF file. There is a way to reach out if you're interested in that. But I also would like to refer back to the gold rush, because I do refer to it in the study. The gold rush was a massive influx into the environment of this county and many counties surrounding us. But when they realized the environmental damage, what happened? We stopped doing the big mining, the hydraulic mining. We stopped removing. And yet, even today, as we sit here, the effects of the environmental impact of the gold rush still exist. They did not go away because we stopped mining gold. And that's the same thing that's happening right now in our county and our neighboring foothill counties as we go forward. We need to understand the relationship between the gold rush and the green rush. In the study, I also go through a list of the chemicals that were found, not only in Calaveras County, but a list of chemicals that were found on U.S. Forest Service property. Our water districts and our water agents need to be aware of these chemicals and understand the importance and the evaluation. There are photographs in here of sites that are also approved grows. I've got one, I don't know if I can bring it up real quick. It's right in your top of your page up here, if somebody wants to see it. But that's an approved grow. And these are the situations we're dealing with. And whether you talk to Dwayne Little with the California Fish and Game, or Carolyn Peterson with California Fish and Game, and even her response to the draft DIR, she said that the current cannabis cultivation activities within Calaveras County have led to significant environmental impacts, including habitat degradation, loss and fragmentation, bearing of streams, diversions of surface water, impacts of water quality, including sediment, garbage, pesticides, and petroleum products. Ladies and gentlemen, we cannot continue to head in this direction. We need a complete 180. And if there's anyone in here that thinks that we can do this right, I think at this point, with the number of unknowns that are out there in our environment, until we have those knowns fully identified and fully understood, that our staff, as great as they are, and they've been very good at giving me information, anybody that I've asked for has given me information. I've talked to Congressman McClintock. I've talked to Congressman Moffett. I've talked to Assemblyman Volpehl and Assemblyman Bigelow, and everybody involved in this. But we need their help. We cannot do this alone. Do you guys have a point of order? I'll wait and let her.
Ma'am, would you please come to the podium and state your point of order?
I thought he was finished. It's been 25-minute presentation that was introduced as, before we get started with our negotiations.
Ma'am, could you lay the basis for your point of order?
I am, I am. It was before we get started with the board negotiations or discussion. So new information has now been, a lot of new information has been provided that none of you and none of us are privy to. So it feels to me like we now need to maybe open public comment again, and that I believe that this, excuse me.
Ladies and gentlemen, please give her the opportunity to state.
It feels as though the public has, should have an opportunity to weigh in on all this new information that's being presented, as well as the Board, because you don't know firsthand where all this secondhand and thirdhand information has come from, and you need time, this is a weighty decision. You need time to research it on your own or as a Board. You're supposed to be working with and through this Board, not independently and take my word for it kind of thing. And we, it's become apparent through yesterday that a couple of our supervisors are already steadfast in their decision.
What's the point of order?
And not wanting to, excuse me, Mr. Mills.
Ladies and gentlemen, and Supervisor Klap.
Right. I just want to say that it has become quite apparent that there are a couple of supervisors who have already decided in their minds before all the public comment. This is the public, the point of orders. Excuse me.
Let me hear this, please.
That all of the public comment should be considered and weighed, but there, it's become quite apparent through the conversations and the comments in the audience, which maybe you're not hearing, you probably aren't, that the decisions were already made in their minds. And so, no matter what is said out here, it may very well be that they're not really being considered. So that's my thought.
May I respond?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to know what the point of order was in my mind has to do with anything. Please tell me.
She's, from my interpretation, which she just relayed to me, that this is new information, and the public should have an opportunity to digest it.
Chair, this is not new research here. This is not new information. This is information that was pulled together by doing extensive research with agencies and individuals to help me do my homework. This report was made possible by getting the information from every source brought together into one document. I would emphasize that this study is all public record information. If anyone wanted to go out there and do it themselves, they certainly could have done it. Simply because I did it and I was able to have the help in getting it done, doesn't make it new information. I'm baffled as to why someone would think that if you do your extra homework and you have the background to get it done, that that somehow becomes new information.
For the hearing, new information for the hearing.
Folks, I am not going to entertain outbursts unless it's proper in the proceedings of this chamber. Let's understand that right now. Mr. Mills.
May I continue?
The information provided here should be provided to the public.
It is.
And I would be considering giving the public an opportunity to review it, but you are correct. The decision rests with this Board. But the information should be provided to the public stating it's part of the decision-making process.
And that is, that is why I mentioned the website, silentpoison.com, and the downloadable PDF file of everything that I've talked about this morning. Allow me to continue. Do you have a point of order, sir?
Yes.
Please come to, state your point of order at the microphone, please.
I am Michael Falby, District 2. I am ignorant, admittedly, as to this aspect of the law. I have a question for County Council.
Sir, this is not the time for Q and A. What's your point of order?
My point of order is, okay.
In a procedural sense, okay?
I'm ignorant to that procedural. I'll do the best I can.
That's okay.
I'm ignorant to the Brown Act, but I would like to know, I would like to know if, the Brown Act was violated yesterday when two sitting supervisors got up and walked out during public comment, therefore muddying their supervisors got up and walked out during public comment, therefore muddying their ability to make a decision on this subject.
Okay.
That's my, and I like to say, correct me if I'm wrong, I'll take this bank.
Mr. Malphi?
Falby.
We will, I'm sorry. We will be addressing that later on.
Thank you.
That is an issue we'll, we'll address later on.
I was wondering if it was a violation of the Brown.
I understand, sir. We'll, we'll address that. That's on, that's on my agenda here, if you will. Continue Supervisor Mills.
Thank you. I want to remind everyone that, because I have a neighbor that had to buy a new logging truck recently, $160,000 because a carb decided that his old diesel engine wasn't sufficient and he was polluting too much. That's not a fun thing. I also remember, because I've been sitting in the back of these chambers since 2014, so everything that we're talking about today is firsthand information for me. But there's something that was said by a former supervisor at the town hall down in Santa Reyes over here, and it caused a number of people from Copperopolis to walk out of the room. Because Chris Wright told developers in Copper to go away because of the environmental damage they were creating. They had put $115 million into my community, but because they were creating environmental damage, he felt they needed to leave. I really don't see the difference here. And I think because of the considerable environmental damage that we currently have before us, coupled with the unknown costs of the eradication, containment, and specifically the remediation that are heading for the stratosphere, Calaveras County must take appropriate action to immediately stop and reduce any further possibility of contamination. Banning cultivation throughout this county is the only sound measure that will allow the county to take a more swift action on the growing of cannabis in our county as we begin to restore watersheds, our quality of life, the health and safety of our residents. Our county's exposure to liability for polluted lands, rivers, streams, ponds, and lakes, as well as downstream waters, is potentially astronomical. We need to keep in mind, under environmental law, there are few excuses available in the defense of our county's potential liabilities for inadequate policy. As environmental law explicitly states, it's not what you knew, but what you should have known. And I will rest my case with that.
Supervisor Clapp, do you have comments? I see you're lighting.
Chair. Point of order, please.
I'll hear your point of order at the microphone, sir.
My point of order is this, if you're going to give facts, then make sure they're correct and don't twist them. The, the public deserves.
Mr. Edson, point of orders are.
My point of order is.
Point of orders are for procedural bases only, not for personal opinions.
Okay, so the, the, the facts that are within the, the report that was given could have been given three weeks ago or a month ago, instead of now when the public doesn't have a chance to digest it. And facts are truth. I also know that when you do a study, you can, any fanatical position can take that study where it wants to go.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'll hear your point of order at the microphone, ma'am. Ms. Morris, go ahead.
I don't, I don't need to go.
No, ma'am, come to the microphone, please.
Okay, but it disrupts everybody.
Don't worry about disrupting, we're here all day.
I, I would just like to know, with the point of order, what's the ruling? If you make a point of, point of order, there must be, you know, whatever, then maybe the county council can tell us what the point of order is, what that means. Instead of us just, you know, are, are we making objections? Because this sounds like objections. A point of order has a significance meaning, does it not?
A point of order is where a member of the public asks a question, a procedural, typically a procedural question, and then the board chair, who is running the meeting, rules on that, and then the meeting continues.
Okay, could you give us an example of procedural questions? Because I don't think any of these are procedural. I'm, I'm truly interested.
An example of a procedural question would be whether public comment was taken, or if, for instance, we needed to reopen public comment, or at what point would the board close public comment and take it back for deliberation? Those are procedural questions.
Okay, but, all right, so you have a question, but I don't think a point of order means that you go on a long tirant or whatever explanation of what it is that you want to say.
It is in the board's.
That would be said in, that would be said in public comment, right?
Typically, yes.
If you, if, if it was ordered, I mean, if it was authorized.
However, it is in the board chair's discretion, because ultimately, the board chair is responsible for running the meeting, hearing any point of order, and ruling on any point of order. So ultimately, it is in the board chair's discretion.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Morris, just to clarify, when Marty came up and raised a point of order, it was regarding new information and the ability to publicly comment on that. We did rule on that. So, that was your ruling. And I understand you may have some concern about the procedural versus the statements made by other people.
That was my concern.
Okay.
For all of us.
I explained it and disregarded that, and we get on with our proceedings.
Okay.
Okay? Is there any other point of order? I noticed we had two hands up there. Is everybody satisfied?
Board chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like for me to clarify a couple things that have come up in the point of orders regarding the Brown Act, voting, et cetera?
I would love that.
As to public comment, the Brown Act only requires that the board open the public comment period one time, so each member of the public has the right to speak on an item, any item on the agenda, at least once before voting is taken, or a vote is act, a final action is taken. Certainly, it is in the board chair's discretion if he wants to take additional public comment, but under the Brown Act, only one public comment period is required. And according to our rules and procedures, only one person per public comment period is allowed, basically, you're only allowed to speak once on each item. So if the board chair wanted to reopen public comment, that would be in their discretion, but that is not required under the Brown Act. Any item of information that is given to the board for consideration, whether it be from a member of the public or any other member of the board, is, is certainly provided to the board, the board clerk, and that is made available to the public as soon as possible. That is a requirement, and that is how we have procedurally what we do. All items are identified and are held with the board clerk, so if you would like a copy of any item that is presented to the board for their consideration, you can contact the board clerk and she will make sure that you get a copy of it. So for instance, this report that Supervisor Mills passed out, a copy of it has been provided to Ms. Severoud, and she will be making that available to anyone who requests it. On voting, that's why I brought up, or why the board chair asked me to state Rule 27 about whether a board member who is absent during a public meeting, if they can actually vote on it, if they are absent during some of the proceedings. And that was something that was brought up yesterday. Our rules and procedures indicate that if a member of the board is absent during a public meeting or hearing where findings are required, which this is the case, that they have to review what they missed in their absence before taking a vote, but they can certainly participate in the vote if they reviewed what they missed and they state that on the record that they did. It's my understanding that Supervisor Mills and Supervisor Clapp reviewed public comment that they were absent for yesterday, early this morning, and so I suspect that they will be making a statement on the record before a vote is actually taken. I think those were the primary questions that, at least I was noting. If anything else comes up, I'm certainly happy to answer the questions.
County Council, I believe one of the gentlemen asked if Dennis and I violated the Brown Act by talking in private. I think that was one of the gentleman's questions.
Well, the Brown Act is open public meeting law, and certainly, this is an open and public meeting. Typically, it, a Brown Act violation occurs when a quorum, so three supervisors meet outside of a public meeting to engage in dialogue that essentially creates a meeting. So certainly, if two supervisors are talking, two supervisors is not a Brown Act violation.
Thank you. Now, county council, could we expand on that a little bit? The fact that three supervisors meet, the conversation has to entail items that are going to be, or possibly can come before the board. Example of a non-Brown Act, Brown Act violation would be a social event where there's no items discussed amongst the supervisors. If they have a, an issue that could come before the board, or is before the board, and they have two or less, that is not a Brown Act violation, correct?
Yes, that is correct. There are many exemptions to the Brown Act. You identified social or ceremonial events. Other exemptions are conferences like CSAC, RCRC conferences. We always recommend that if there are three, even if it is purely social, that you, not necessarily congregate just because of the appearance, but certainly purely ceremonial or social events are exempt from the Brown Act. We do recommend that you not participate in any kind of conversation where it is, where the topic is something that is in the subject matter jurisdiction of the board when you are meeting.
Thank you, council. Would you come to the microphone, please?
Excuse me. You can hate me.
Your issue, ma'am?
Yes, so thank you for the clarification. As I understand, it is under the jurisdiction of the chair as to whether or not you want to reopen public comment. My concern remains that new information has been provided, it is not yet provided to the public, at least not the public here, and no time to digest it, understand it, confirm or deny any of the information that was presented in the 20-plus presentation. And so, you're going to be maybe making a decision today, and you don't have the time to really investigate and digest this new information. And I know that there are people in this audience that have expertise in many of those areas. And so, it really, really concerns me that in the interest of open, transparent, and governance, and our goal, which we all want to get to the best solution, we really need to reopen, I request that we reopen public comment before the board deliberation, because as I understand, when they first started this, he said before we go into deliberation. So that was not part of your deliberation. So, thank you.
Noted. Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, your point of order, come to the microphone.
Yes, I'd like to address this procedural information. Everything that Mr. Mills has presented today, I have already read. People have already talked about, people have spoke about these at board meetings as far back as I can remember. I think the first time was April of 2016, along with previous board supervisor Cliff Edson. So, the information has been before us. It's been sent in emails, it's been talked about here.
Is that, is that the basis of your point of order?
My point of, point of order is no public comment is needed. Thank you.
Well noted, ma'am. Well noted. Thank you. Council, do you have a comment?
Um, yeah, I would just, one other thing that I wanted to add is, certainly supervisors have the ability to present information to their fellow supervisors, not necessarily to sway or recommend that they consider it in their vote, but rather as, as information and a basis for why they are voting the way they are deciding to vote. It is, whether it was part of deliberations or not, certainly supervisors have the option to present information so it's part of the record as a basis for why they are choosing to vote, or recommend voting in whatever way they are choosing to vote.
Is this the only copy you have?
Yes, I have some for the press as well. And I have one for Diane. I have three. This one's for Diane.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to rule on the point of orders that's been recently brought up by several individuals. We're going to provide a copy of this information on the podium. We're going to take a 20-minute break for the public to digest this information. We'll be back in 20 minutes.
Mike, I can put.
20 minutes. I'll put this one up. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. We had to make copies for everyone. I understand there's, all been distributed, that's good. Please, can we have the door shut, please? Ladies and gentlemen, this information has been disseminated to the public and also disseminated to staff. At this point, this information is new, and it does deserve the attention of everybody, especially the board, and the public, and our staff. Supervisor Topenelli, do you have a comment? Your light's on?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I had some conversations with environmental consultants during the break. I'm sorry, I, I had some conversation with our environmental consultants during the break, and at this time, because of this presentation and the timing of it, I, I would like to move that we tabled this item at this time to give our environmental consultant time to review this document, and then come back to us with their opinion, and hopefully we can get it on the 24th agenda. I think in all due respect, the size of the document and the content of the document, we should have our consultant at least review it.
Supervisor Topenelli, is that a motion or a poll request for the board?
That was, that was a motion.
It's moved that we tabled this item until the next meeting of the Board of Supervisors, which is scheduled for next Tuesday. CIO Lutz, can that be accomplished in that time period?
I look over at the clerk. I mean, certainly, the, the board can, can move to table it at this point, looking at the preliminary agenda, and I think the clerk can answer it's fairly light. I might suggest that maybe we look at what items are on there and try and move non-priority items to the following meeting, just to break up, to keep it as light as possible.
Yeah, and as far as the, the document or any staff memo, I wouldn't, it, it doesn't sound like there would be any revisions of the staff memo, we would just be continuing it, and the consultant, if they're providing anything, could provide it as a handout, as a supplement, as, you know, we could, I, I can do any kind of number of things.
Yeah, and if there is a meaningful document to be distributed, we can get it posted online to a, a website that will just probably, you know, get out there so that everybody can see it and know it in advance. Yeah, from the boards, I mean, even if we put a spot on the board's page to post it there, we can work out the logistics.
I, I think in all fairness to, to all parties concerned, that, that everybody has a chance to review this document and see its contents, especially our consultants.
So I understand that's your motion?
Yes.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I would second that to allow staff the opportunity to do a complete review and, and provide their input.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on the motion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Stewart, District Two. I live in an area that I am very concerned about the runoff of this. We have a chance to mitigate before we get significant runoff from rain. If we have a rain that moves.
Ma'am, ma'am, this is just on the motion to table it, okay?
Boy, I disagree. I really think we should not.
Thank you. Yeah, motion to table is the only issue at hand. Seeing no further comment, I'll bring it back to the board for a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no.
No.
For one, motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Nope. That'd be nice. Good try.
Okay. Item number two on our agenda is from the Planning Department, to conduct a public hearing to adopt an ordinance rescinding Chapter 17.91 and replacing it with a new Chapter 17.91, Medical Cannabis Dispensaries Ordinance, and find the project exempt from SEQA.
Staff, are you prepared to make a presentation? Hate to throw this at you, but you've got it.
Kaman's a little surprised that we hit it this quickly.
Oh, yes, there is.
But, yes, so this is a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Ma'am? Ma'am, deputy?
You've got to be disrespectful.
No. This is nothing for the girls. Very sick.
Continue, Mr. Mauer, please.
So, this is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to rescind the existing 1791 and replace it with a revised version. The Planning Commission requested staff work with County Council to revise the dispensary ordinance, to bring it into compliance with the recently adopted state laws relating to all of the cannabis-related activities under what was MRSA, and then Prop 64, and then MACURSA, and finally became MALCURSA, the law that was adopted, SB 94, adopted by the legislature in June and signed by the Governor in June. There are changes to state law that conflict with our local ordinance. The Commission asked that we bring that back to them to discuss at the same time that they were looking at the overall regulatory or ban ordinance that we just had on the agenda. This was presented to the Board, or to the Commission, a few weeks ago. They made some modifications to it, to, well, yes, they made modifications to it, and essentially they, what we were directed to do by the Commission, and what we brought back to them, was the existing provisions of 1791, which were adopted in 2005, to maintain those, but bring it into compliance with the state law. The Commission modified that through the hearing process and added some additional requirements, and primarily, these were to limit the total number of dispensaries to a total of five. Right now, there are three that are existing, that were previously approved in the past. We have one that is in process right now, under the existing code, and that would allow for one additional one should that other one be approved. So, a total of five dispensaries in the county. They wanted to require a conditional use permit. Right now, it is only an administrative use permit, which I am approving authority rather than going to the Planning Commission for. They wanted to require a conditional use permit for any new dispensaries. They wanted to limit allowable cultivation within the dispensary to 400 square feet. Right now, it is based on the physical constraints of the building itself, or the number of patients that they may have. So, if there were a large building, it really was almost an unlimited number of plants that could be grown within the dispensary for medical cannabis patients. They expanded the list of sensitive uses. Right now, it can't be within 1,000 feet of, the boundary of the property can't be within 1,000 feet of what we consider a sensitive use, which would include schools, elementary, middle school, and high schools, parks, libraries, and other youth-oriented facilities, which is not really clearly defined, but where the primary purpose of the facility is geared towards youth, they want, you know, that's what the current code requires, you have to be 1,000 feet away from that. They expanded that to include school bus stops and preschool or daycare centers. And then, they wanted to add a provision that if an inspection request was denied, that that could be grounds for revocation of the permit. So, that's the recommended version of the ordinance that's in your packet. It essentially allows for the continued operation of existing medical cannabis dispensaries, from medical-only, not recreational use, that it requires still the review by the Sheriff's Office of employees and the operators of the dispensary for background check. That is only allowed in the CP, commercial professional office zone, and the new ones could continue to operate under the provisions that they have. We have an annual review, it's actually annual renewal of the permit, and that if they're not in compliance with the provisions of that permit, they could be revoked, and any new one requires a conditional use permit. We have determined that this ordinance amendment is exempt from SEQA, under the provisions that it does not, what am I saying? Project is exempt from SEQA if it would be clear that there are no significant impacts associated with the action. And we do not see that there could be any significant impacts in modifying our condition that would restrict the ability to locate new dispensaries or existing dispensaries from what is already in place, and actually add additional restrictions on, so both the number, as well as the location requirements are further restricted than what's currently allowed. So, that tightening of the rules and regulations clearly would not create a significant environmental impact, so we've found that this is exempt, and we've prepared to file a notice of exemption for that. So, the Commission's recommendation is that you adopt the ordinance as recommended by the Commission. Do you have any questions, if me?
Questions of Mr. Mauer by the Board? Supervisor Mills?
Mr. Mauer, on CP zones, I can name a couple of CP zones that are right in the middle of residential, simply because that's been grandfathered in over time. How would we ensure that those residential areas are not financially impacted by the placement of a dispensary in the middle of a residential zone, simply because there's one CP that happens to be in that area?
Well, I don't know that you can do that. There is, you know, there are a number of uses that can go into a CP zone, and where we have juxtaposition of different zones next to each other, there's always sort of that inherent potential conflict. They have to meet the same standards, there's no ability to operate outside the confines of the permit, you know, they can't use the product on site, they have to get home with them. I don't know that having a dispensary in the vicinity of a residential area necessarily more of a conflict than other commercial uses that might be allowed in that zone.
Mr. Mauer, part of the recommendation here is, instead of an AUP, that we go to a CUP, and under conditional use permit, that would be public, through a public meetings going forward. And I think you could somewhat limit that, Mr. Mills, by going to a CUP, because that addresses all the neighbors within 1,000 feet of it, and they certainly can speak up at the Planning Commission meeting of it, and if there's any appeal, if they approve it, it would come to this Board, so.
That's absolutely correct.
Further questions of Mr. Mauer by the Board? Staff comments? Sheriff?
Almost afternoon now. I've reviewed the, what was submitted to the Planning Commission. I have some concerns over this new ordinance. If you go to your packet page, I guess it's page 54, top right corner says number five, well, that's just item number, packet page number 54, 1791.050, processing. It talks about the criminal backgrounds to be conducted by the Sheriff's Office pursuant to penal code sections. There is some specific language that needs to be inputted into this, and I've talked with County Council about this. It kind of goes back to if we do an ordinance to regulate commercial marijuana, in order for the Sheriff's Office to do complete background checks on employees and-
Excuse me, Sheriff, apparently our packets are not identical.
Okay.
67?
Okay, well, it's 1791.050 is the section.
It's page 67 in the Board packs.
Okay. Mine says packet number 54, so, my apologies.
Okay.
You let me know when you're there.
We're there.
Okay. Anyhow, there is specific language in order for me to do what we call a triple I, which gives me the ability to check people's backgrounds throughout the United States. The way this is written, at this point, I can only check them, which would be for like an employment verification, which is basically only within the confines of California. It really limits the backgrounds that I can do, meaning that if somebody has a felony in Florida, I have no way of knowing that. So, there's specific language that needs to be inputted into this process so that I can do the correct background checks. Not only that, the ordinance needs to be sent to the FBI so that they can approve that language. Now, they've already given me the language, so I don't see a problem there, but it has to be sent to them before they can approve it, so that they can say, yes, you can do these triple I checks on these folks. So, that's one issue I have.
Sheriff?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to clarify, was my understanding that we used the language that you had provided in my office? Is that incorrect?
I haven't seen it in here.
I believe that it is in there, because we, I provided it to staff, and it was my understanding, we provided, we included language that you specifically asked for.
Okay, this is it then? Okay, it is in there then, I apologize. My mistake, thank you.
That's one.
That's number one down, see, there we go, we're on a roll. If you continue with that section, though, at the very end, it says, "If the applicant is an anti, each owner is defined in da-da-da, shall submit fingerprints and be subject to background checks. The Planning Director shall consider the results of the planning, of the background check." No disrespect to the Planning Director, but why should he be able to overrule if I deny somebody? I have an issue with that. Planning Director should not be overruling what I, if I deny somebody for a reason. If you go to the following page, down under Operations Restrictions for Medical Cannabis Dispensaries, it says, "Any citation issued to a dispensary under business and profession codes, or any seizures of cannabis or cannabis products from a dispensary under BNP section shall be reported to the Planning Department with three business days." Again, this is a criminal issue. Why should it be reported to the Planning Director?
What section are you on, Sheriff?
It's 1791.070, Sub D. David.
We're there.
Okay.
Continue, sir.
Same section, 1791.070, Sub L, Lincoln. "The permit holder shall secure the premises in accordance with a security plan approved by the Planning Department." Again, security should be done by the Sheriff's Office. No disrespect to the Planning Department intended at all, but we have certain criteria that we would like to see done on a security plan. And then, if you follow down to subsection SAM, S., "The permit holder shall not, without the written approval of both the account of the State Licensing Authority and the Planning Director, materially or substantially change or alter the premises, the usage of the premises, or the mode, or character, or business operation conducted from the premises." I would like to be involved in that also. The Planning Director needs to be involved in that because of the, you know, a change of the premises, but I still need to be involved in that section. And then, subsection V is invictor. "A dispensary shall provide to the Planning Director, upon request, written evidence to the Planning Director's reasonable satisfaction, that the dispensary is not engaged in interstate commerce as it relates to medical cannabis." Again, that is a law enforcement issue that should be related to me, to my department. As it relates to this ordinance, again, I want to make sure that the Sheriff's Office is involved in making sure this ordinance gets everything that needs to be put in it, so that it resolves any issues that we have, that we've had to deal with in the past. I didn't mention it originally with an urgent, with the ordinance of marijuana cultivation. If you guys do a ban, that's one issue. If, for some reason, you decide to regulate that, the Sheriff's Office has to be involved in putting that ordinance together. Again, County Council obviously is already aware of the information that needs to be put in for the FBI, so we can do our triple I checks, but it is imperative that law enforcement is involved in that. Marijuana as a whole, again, is federally illegal. The state of California has deemed it a legal product. The problem that it puts the Sheriff's Office in is that the criminal element that it brings. So, the Sheriff's opinion in this county is that this program, yet it be a land use issue, should be directed through the Sheriff's Office because of the illegal activity that is involved with it. It's a huge issue. The reason I think we're in part of the boat that we're in is because some of the comments that were made by Captain Macedo when he was acting sheriff, and Barbara Yook, and when I became the sheriff, that they were not listened to. There's a lot of things that need to be changed in this program, if you decide to move forward with a regulatory program. As far as the, what we're talking about today, 1791, the Sheriff's Office needs to be involved in this, very much so. I think that's all I have for right now.
I have a couple of questions. Supervisor Topenelli?
Sheriff, in the subsections that you mentioned?
Yes.
Is it your preference that it solely says Sheriff's Office, or can it say Planning Director and Sheriff's Office?
It should say Sheriff's Office. Those are criminal activities that are related to that, and I'm the one that's doing the background checks. The other issue that I've talked to Mr. Lutz about this prior, and to the Board about this prior, is that when business licenses are received, the Sheriff's, if you look at the business license, the Sheriff's Office has an area to approve or deny. If I deny them, it's not a mandatory, I can get overridden, I have been overridden in the past. If the Sheriff's Office decides that somebody should be denied, I don't believe that the Planning Department, the tax assessor, or anybody else should be able to override my denial, and that's happening, and I think that needs to be addressed.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I think I'd like to, Supervisor Mills?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I think I'd like to hear from Mr. Mauer on these issues.
Sure. Yeah. So, as we discussed, the language that the Sheriff had requested was inserted at the Planning Commission on the first component of 05- the planning commission on the first component of oh-five-oh D. The planning commission felt that because this was a land use permit, that I, particularly with, regarding administrative use permit, and the approving authority, so I had the authority to do that. As a policy decision, if you want to substitute the sheriff in there, that's certainly a call that you have the right to make.
On that, I just also, if that is the policy decision, I know we've listed in the ordinance the business and profession code criteria, which is already stated in state law as the factors for their background check. We did put "and other relevant factors." I would definitely recommend, just because if people challenge a denial, we need to have some basis to defend the denial if that's challenged and upheld by the board, that the, if that, if the sheriff is going to be given the sole decision over whether or not the background check is passed, that the basis of denial needs to be provided to the planning department so that we have that basis somewhere recorded. It can't just be a yes or a no. I don't think we'd be able to defend it without a basis actually being provided.
And I don't believe that there's a problem with denying counsel the reason for the denial. The issue is allowing the public to know that there's a closed record on somebody's background. That's not an issue so that they can defend it in court. And I don't have a problem with the planning department denying or approving their side of it, but when it comes to the criminal background checks, if I deny somebody, I'm not just randomly saying, hey, I don't like Billy Bob over here, he's going to get denied. It's for a specific reason, and I can supply that to counsel for that reason. I just don't feel that the planning department should be able to overrule my denial.
And so, how we've handled this in the past, if there's been a sheriff denial, and the planning department, then therefore has taken the position that, planning department has said, okay, the sheriff has discretion on this, then the planning department, the planning commission, if it were appealed, reviews the sheriff's decision for abuse of discretion, just as it would be reviewing the planning department, if it had made the decision, for abuse of discretion. Similarly, when the appeals went up to the board of supervisors, the board of supervisors would then be reviewing the sheriff's decision for abuse of discretion. So, you can do that, but that's how the review, understand that's how the review would work.
Supervisor Mills, do you have a question?
That makes sense. You have to give a chance for appeal and a reason for the denial, and it has to go through due process.
That's correct. For the rest of it, I'm assuming Mr. Sheriff DiVassilio, that as far as the background check, that's where you, where the sheriff wanted to be able to make the decision. For everything else, whether it's notifying, if it's just notifying the planning department, and we just add notify the sheriff as well, I'm presuming you don't have an issue with the planning department also receiving notice of all those other things.
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay. So, that will be the policy decision. I mean, as the planning commission felt that land use decisions should, and have stated in some of their hearings, they believe that land use decisions should ultimately be in the hands of planning director. The sheriff is asking the board to change the decision to make it similar to the process we're using now with respect to background check denials, and I think that's a policy call.
So, in the question then, you don't see a conflict with an overlap between the civil and the criminal in particularly seventeen ninety-one oh-seven-oh with what the sheriff is saying about D, L, S, and V, and inserting, that's, he's saying that's criminal, what he's asking for there. Am I correct, Sheriff?
Absolutely.
And it senses it would be a criminal matter, it would be a conflict, in essence, in land use to put civil in the middle of a criminal statement.
Well, I believe criminal would trump civil.
Well, that's my point.
I think we're going a little further field. The ordinance that we're asking for is, this is a civil process, it's a civil administrative permission. There, it's possible that through the processing of the permit, that there could be criminal issues that arise, and I think, so I don't know that there's a conflict. I don't see, I'm not sure that there's a conflict between...
I agree. I don't believe that there's a conflict. I think that if you look at D, the citation to the dispensary, because of seizure, okay, if there's a seizure of product, more than likely, that's, I mean, that could fall under eight oh-six, I don't know, or it could fall under a criminal issue if we build a case under that. So, if it's a civil eight oh-six issue, then it's a civil issue. If it becomes a criminal issue, then it becomes a criminal issue. And that's why I'm not wanting to disregard the planning department. I just want to make sure that the sheriff's department has the ability to do its job and not be overridden by the planning department's decisions. When it comes down to L, the security plan, again, that is, and I agree, it is a, a planning department's issue, but because of the product that is being contained in that building, it can become a criminal issue because people are going to break into this building. I want to be involved in knowing that all the security aspects are taken care of. And it's not to override the planning department, it's to work with the planning department to ensure that everything is in place, that needs to be in place.
So, if we said that the security plan should be approved by the sheriff and the planning director, would that satisfy it?
Absolutely.
Sheriff DiVassilio?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a quick question back on D. Citations that are issued under the B and P codes, that would act, those citations would be issued by your office, would they not?
Technically, but I don't know if code can go in there and cite those sections or not.
I don't believe so, so I...
I wasn't sure.
If it's a business and professions code section citation, I would imagine that that would be coming from your office.
Okay.
So, the way that I read this is that if, if those citations are issued by the sheriff's office, that the sheriff's office notify the planning department so they have something in their file that a citation under those circumstances occurred at that dispensary.
Okay.
And then they would be in a position to potentially use that as a basis for denial or something like that if that was necessary in the future.
Okay.
And I suspect it may also be a potential that the state might notify us, so having the sheriff and the planning department in there together. The other thing is, you know, if there's violations, then we would, the planning department would be the agency that would take that up for revocation. So, I think it's important that we both are within, you know, we work well together.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, you know, discount them or exclude them in any means. I just, I want to make sure that the sheriff's department has their fingers in this pie. That's all.
Sheriff?
Yes.
During this process, the B and P, business and professions violations, they would actually be prosecuted by the DA under your reports and your citations.
Correct. Yes.
And that is on the criminal aspect, and regards to the planning department, they would handle the administrative?
Correct.
So, it's kind of a joint jurisdiction, if you will?
It is, and that's why I say I don't want to discount them. I want them involved in it also. I just want to make sure that we have the ability, and again, my redneck way doesn't read everything super clear, and I just want to make sure that we're super clear on a lot of this stuff.
Okay, all right. Any other issues that need to be discussed regarding the sheriff's comments? Mr. Mauer?
I have nothing else. I'm fine with the suggestion.
We've got it covered. We have a suggested solution then.
Sounds like it.
Everybody's in agreeance?
Would you?
We'll let you know what the board says.
Would you be building any kind of an enterprise fund to support the costs involved with what you'd have to do here?
I don't know. How much money are you going to give me?
Well, it's just a matter of how much you're going to recover, or how much you're going to charge.
Well, we don't recover costs on criminal.
No, but on civil, where you're doing certain things...
That would be a question for Mr. Mauer and what they could recover in fees and fines.
Which could support your activity and the costs involved in your activity, correct?
It could if you folks decided to take a percentage of that and give it to sheriff's office, yes.
That's why I'm talking about it.
Yes.
Okay.
That's not mine.
Okay. Further comments?
Mr. Clapp?
I have something. It's more, it's more directed to planning, is one of the offensive things I've seen was the outside advertisement. I had real problems with that. I think that the marijuana is a class-one narcotic, and it should be regulated for outside advertisement, same as tobacco. And what you have right now is, I think they can have outside advertisement if they don't use marijuana or cannabis, and, but yet we have the gold and green, different things, and I'd like to have all outside advertisements seen banned.
Without doing more research on that, I would be concerned about the free speech issues associated with outdoor advertising. There are numerous court cases that have severely restricted the ability to regulate content on outdoor advertising. As much as I, you know, I agree with you in some degree, I, without having counsel do more research on the degree that we can regulate, you know, we have standards in our, that you can't advertise on site showing depictions of the marijuana plant.
Now, Carissa has a huge, there's a big section on outdoor advertising regulations, and I suspect that the state has occupied the field to a certain extent, limiting to a certain extent what the locals can do in that regard, but I do think that we can support the provision that we have in here, which is, was in the prior seventeen ninety-one, that you don't have any sign of, any indication that it's cannabis, no reference to cannabis on the outside.
I believe McDonald's was in the Supreme Court with the city of San Jose, and the Goldlaw Arches came down.
Okay, I'm just telling you what, the state, the state law has a large section about advertising, and so, to the extent that the board wants to limit it more, it would require definitely additional research to see in what areas we are preempted, just by the state law, in which areas we are limited by constitutional limitations. Signs is a very big source of litigation, so beyond what we have right now in our own codes and for different zones, I would, I would not recommend making any quick decisions to do more restrictions than what we have right now.
I just was telling you what I thought was repugnant in the way it's drafted now, and I think that you should check with some Supreme Court rulings, and one I just gave you was San Jose versus, you know, McDonald's, and that went to the Supreme Court in the United States.
Sheriff Alver, you have any more questions for me?
I have none. Any further questions of the sheriff, by staff, or by the board of supervisors? Thank you, Sheriff. Any further comment by Mr. Mauer or county council?
I have none.
No.
This time, we'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment? You have three minutes on this particular agendized item.
Good morning, Board. Bill McManus, Ban Committee, got several comments, been involved with dispensaries for some time. Some of the comments that I may make are not to be taken personally by staff. They've got their job, and they operate within their guidelines. But in any case, Mr. Mauer was somewhat incorrect when he talked, tried to define sensitive use area. It's not areas that are designed for youth, it's areas where youth may congregate, or minors may congregate. So, it could be a pizza parlor, or school, whatever the case may be, as for schoolyards, ballparks. So, I think that rather than try to identify all the possibilities of sensitive areas, that language be added, that the, it'll be a regulatory matter from the board, that all they have to do is, rather than change the ordinance, is change what is in a sensitive use area, and that would apply to the ordinance, because we don't know what may be coming up in the future. I would also recommend that any reference to A U P, Administrative Use Permit, be replaced with C U P. These areas are so sensitive that I think the public is entitled to hear it at a planning commission meeting and give it a voice to talk about that. As far as cultivation in dispensaries, I would recommend that there be no cultivation at all. If this is, in fact, medicine, all product going to a dispensary for resale should be obtained from a state-tested facility. We're not going to be selling junk weed. If they really want medicine, they're going to have to get it, just like a pharmacy. Pharmacies do not make their own medicine. They buy it from testing, or tested facilities, and they resell it to the public. So, there should be no cultivation within any dispensary. As far as advertising, I had a battle with planning, this is before Mr. Mauer. When they, when you talk about advertising, I actually filed a complaint saying that the green cross out on a highway marquee was a representation of marijuana. The planning, or the code compliance officer who looked it up, who's no longer with us, told me that in Madagascar, that is a symbol for chewing gum. I told him that we are not in Madagascar. We are in California, United States, and we all know what a green cross or the number four-twenty means. I think any reasonable person can figure that out, so that if we're going to have advertising, we, it better be just the name of the business, address, and phone number, and not indicating what might be in the business, because that becomes a crime magnet for criminals. I agree with everything the sheriff said. We have seen that planning is totally incapable of dealing with regulations on other matters.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Any further public comment? That's staff. Public comment time. You can stick around. We'll get to you. We'll get to you, District Attorney York. It's public comment time.
Bill Wilson, District One. Sheriff testified at planning commission that really hasn't had a lot of problems with the dispensaries that we have in our county. We have three of them. Those three dispensaries also service the other two neighboring counties, and probably Alpine for little trees. There's just all kinds of crime associated with illegal marijuana growths. We're worried about interstate transportation of illegal narcotics from licensed dispensaries. We really are afraid that these people are going to jeopardize their state license to sell a gram of marijuana to somebody in, I don't know, Massachusetts? I think they've already legalized. Let's see. Alabama, there we go, Alabama. We're going to send marijuana to Alabama from a dispensary? Really? I don't think that's going to happen, but it could. I think it'd probably be more likely happening by somebody purchasing that marijuana, or that cream, or those gummy bears from that dispensary, and then putting it in a package and sending it. But that's just my interpretation, not necessarily. Online sales, online sales are going to be there. We talk about not being able to put a marijuana leaf somewhere. Wasn't the banned symbol of marijuana leaf with the big, no, don't do that international symbol over it? Wasn't, weren't they all over the county? Wow. That's okay if we say no marijuana, we can use that symbol. Not if we're going to use it for medication. These three dispensaries that we have are many people's only source of a restricted medication by our federal government, which, after yesterday, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has ruled that we now have no, the federal government has no legal prosecution of people adhering to strict state law. That was their decision. It's probably going to go to the Supreme Court, like McDonald's in San Jose, but somebody's going to end up having to decide that. Marijuana is now legal in thirty states and the District of Columbia. That's over half of the United States. We only have fifty, we haven't got fifty-one yet. I know there's some people on that board up here that want another state. I wonder if it's a conflict of interest between them representing the state of California on this board, yet wanting to remove this county from the state? Maybe not, probably not. They're independent. They don't walk out on people when they make public comment.
Thank you.
Vicki Renke, Angels Camp. I just have some comments... I just have some comments too, on the ordinance and dispensaries in general. I think, just kind of thinking in the back of your mind about how dispensaries got started, was medical marijuana. They were never licensed to be dispensaries in the state. If you look at the laws, it was never legal. They've just been able to manipulate laws to make them be able to be dispensaries, because they were supposed to only dispense to medical patients and through co-ops, anyway. So there's great concern about continuing with the dispensaries here. And now I know that this is written up for medical, so that narrows it down, just for medical patients. My concern is that this is now not just for medical, it's a recreational use of marijuana. And the state has opened it up for dispensaries to sell recreationally. I know the planning commission very loudly said, "We don't want recreational marijuana sold in dispensaries," and I, that was part of their comment, so that was good. And I know our goal is to have medicine for people who need it. So just keeping those concerns in mind, one, we shouldn't allow any cultivation in the dispensaries, because, you know, we're looking to ban all the cultivation. And also, in your own ordinance, 1791-070-R says, "The permit holder shall receive medical cannabis and medical cannabis products only from a medical cannabis distributor with a current valid M Type 11 distributor license issued under," however you say that, Moaxra or whatever. So that, that's a good statement there, because that's exactly how it should be done. So I don't know why we're talking about any cultivation, anyway, in a dispensary, because we're telling them that they have to follow the state law that says you have to buy it from a licensed distributor. So, you know, keep that one in mind. Again, microbusiness, I know that's part of that cultivating. I hope you understand what a microbusiness is, and we shouldn't be allowing that in our county. And the need for strong enforcement, you know, obviously we agree everything that the sheriff has said. There's one other thing that I think should be added, and that is, the sheriffs should have the opportunity, and maybe you do, to go in and do undercover, because medical cards are not going to be distributed anymore. The state's going to stop issuing them, you have to do it locally. So now how are you going to have people with medical cards coming into a dispensary? That's going to be, and we all know, I could walk in there, because I'm over 21.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, anyway, you get the drift.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jessica Clofin. I just have heard some things about federal intervention, I just wanted to remind everyone about a couple things. AB 1578 is the law that's set in place that says the federal government cannot come and intervene in a state if they already have guidelines in place, and specifically is about commercial cannabis cultivation. So if a state or county makes regulation, makes guidelines and allows it, the federal government is not allowed to come in, as well as the state is not allowed to refer those cultivators to the federal government. It's a protection. Also, California Senate Bill 420 protects, enhances the access of patients and caregivers to medical marijuana through collective cooperative cultivation projects. So that's the safe access. That's allowing, everybody in Calaveras County deserves the access to their meds, meaning they shouldn't have to drive all the way out to a different county, or somewhere ridiculously far to access their medication, mostly knowing that they're, probably have medical conditions, health conditions, whatever, that could easily prevent them from doing that. So it's really all just about safe access, and the more that we can regulate the things like the dispensaries and around, the more that that whole access for the people in the local area is safe. As far as the cultivation on dispensaries, it seems sense that if you have a dispensary that is already regulated, and is already being, following compliance, to allow them to cultivate expands their regulated access, we're reducing the amount of product that's being driven around the county, because it's being produced right at the place where it's being sold, and it's also regulated and safe, because it's already coming from an access. Also, state cards are going to be required by all medical patients, that means a California state medical card will be required for all medical patients, and that's essentially the state reviewing to make sure that the patients are covered under a more clear medical, medical guidelines. So just please consider that this really isn't about whether we like or disagree or agree with cannabis, this is really about a medicine that is helping people, and people deserve the safe access, to choose how they want to medicate themselves, and we do have the right to legally regulate it and be protected from the federal government because of it. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker.
Good morning.
Morning.
Almost. Judy Hurley, Mountain Ranch. The law is an effective teacher. When a law is formulated and passed that is not for the common good, but may be, may seem to be, because our jails are full, or my friend is a good person, but she's a user, by the way, legislative bodies lately seem to be taking the path of least resistance, the path of convenience that is too many times detrimental to the common good. When you do that, there are unintended consequences, and you own it. Then it becomes personal, and you, you own it whether you want to or not. Please remove all commercial cultivation of marijuana, including the dispensaries. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker.
Trent Fiorino, District One. Just on the subject of, you know, we're talking about medical marijuana and distributing it to dispensaries, and this always confused me, because when I go to my doctor and I get a prescription for medicine, I have to go get my medicine from somebody that has a degree in pharmacology. But somehow with marijuana, we just throw the rules out the window for everything. Here's an ad from Mountain Ranch, online, "Mountain Ranch Gorilla Number Four. Bloom Farms' new single-origin strain is a multiple award-winning hybrid of one of California's most popular strains. Gorilla Number Four known for gluing patients to the couch." And that sounds wonderful. Says it has a resinous buds that translate into a robust and complex vaping experience, and this is called a medicine. Who are we fooling? Even the advertisement, they're using the idea of medicine to hide the fact that it's really for getting high. There are no studies, double-blind studies, that show much effect that marijuana has for medicine, anyway. I agree, it needs to be studied. We need to open up studies for it, because there is some, there is some indication that the CBD in marijuana may have some medical benefit, but I notice sees that they're advertising, they proudly advertise it's 65% CHC and zero CBD. Why do they grow it without the CBD in it? Because it interferes with the high of the product. So we're not really talking about medicine, we're talking about distributing a drug that gets people high. And we need to just deal with the reality of what it really is. If we're a medicine, like any other medicine that you got to get a prescription for, you get a prescription for this, you should have to go to somebody with a degree in pharmacology to get it distributed to you, not just, you know, Joe Bob that's growing it in the back of the, of the building, and making claims that it has some medical value in distributing it out of there. I mean, this whole thing is absolutely insane. I would say that we don't need any dispensaries at all. And again, this is being advertised here, this is, it sounds like they produce this product here, Mountain Ranch, they're advertising it online, this is already a microbusiness. That's why they need to be banned. If they're actually producing it, growing it, producing the oil and everything in Mountain Ranch, I think that that's already violating some regulations, but that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Hi there, Jeremy Carlson, with Little Trees up in Arnold. Let's see, so obviously I'm against banning dispensaries, I won't go too far into that. Onto the ordinance, the state is moving away from the word dispensary, it might be more appropriate to call us retailers, we would technically be called a medical cannabis retailer. In the ordinance itself, 17.91.040, about existing dispensaries and sensitive use areas, the planning commission added bus stops to the sensitive use areas. Those are kind of a, I think we've discussed them before, they're kind of a moving target. I don't even know where any bus stops are, and I'm certainly not going to call a school and ask them where all their bus stops are, so I don't know if that would apply to us as an existing dispensary. And then I've written to, at length, on 17.91.070O and P for the distribution and manufacturing and microbusinesses. I was able to confirm through the state workshops, the state did some licensing workshops yesterday, I did confirm that those components would be required for us to continue what we have been doing for a little over four years now, which is, we have a small grow onsite, we package it onsite, we put it on our own shelves, and we sell to our own customers. We're not talking about distributing to other dispensaries or other businesses, we're talking about producing our own product, putting it on our own shelves, and distributing it to our own customers. So we would have to basically wear all those hats. So we would have a room that's our distribution room, so we'd grow our product, it would go into the distribution room, and from there it would be tested, as it stays in the distribution room. And then from there, we would distribute it to ourselves on the retail side. And as a distributor, we would also be required to pay the cultivation excise tax to the state, as well as the 15% excise tax that comes from the retail side. So, you know, this microbusiness is actually, it's, it's going to be more difficult than running your standard retail, because we have to, we have to wear all those hats, and we have responsibilities and regulations from the state for all those different types of businesses. But it's all enclosed in one premises, basically. 17.91.070-R, receive only from distributors. Again, it's, there's, there's no distributors right now, they're not going to be licensed until next year. If this goes into effect, and then there's no distributors for us to buy from, then obviously that's going to be pretty difficult for us. And one other item that I think came up earlier, I wasn't here for, was the proof that we're not engaged in interstate commerce, can't really prove a negative, I mean, it's just impossible, it's a logical fallacy, I think it's been discussed before. Thanks.
Thank you.
Joan Wilson, District One. Somebody's already covered the signs, I don't think the leaf is a bad idea, it's been used all over the county. Liquor store, you have a liquor store right across the street from a high school, you want to talk about sensitive use? High school students are one of the major problems of going in and stealing liquor. So, and I don't ever know of any liquor being used medicinally. Maybe they've called it that, but I don't know of a doctor that has recommended anyone to use alcohol for a medical reason. I know I had to see a doctor, my father had to see a doctor to get a recommendation when he was passing from cancer. So doctors are involved in marijuana. Microbusiness, I think microbusiness is one of the reasons, one of the things the state used to give the small person, the small farmer, a game, a place in this business. If you want Walmart of cannabis, then get rid of the microbusinesses. You'll have Walmart. And I don't mean to pick on Walmart. As far as medicine, CBD, THC, terpenes, all are part of that medicine. There are conditions that need a high THC, there are conditions that need a high CBD. This is what we're learning. If you look at different places like Israel, where they have done extensive studies, the UK has done extensive studies medically, Canada has done extensive studies medically on cannabis. Studies are being here, are being done here in California on cannabis, and they are finding that every part of the plant is medicine. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Morning.
I think that people can go someplace else and buy whatever they need. When doctors give their okay for somebody to get cannabis or pot, they, it is not a prescription, it's a okay, and so they go in. So say, a dispensary locally has the, runs out of pot, so what's he going to do? You know, they're, they will be buying it from somebody else, and so being signed against it, number one, but number two, it should be limited if you go that direction. The sheriff should be given the priority on everything. If, he should not be kept from doing his job. The lady said that they need to be protected by, from the federal government, the federal government is trying to protect us. They've made all kinds of regulations about cigarettes, and all, everything that applies to cigarettes should absolutely apply to marijuana, because our kids think, and I've talked to them, our kids think that marijuana is okay, and cigarettes are bad.
Right ahead, ma'am, still on your time.
Sorry.
Good morning. My name is Douglas Hughes, sixth generation of this county, been here a long time. I unfortunately had to move away when I was a kid. What I've noticed in this county is, everything has shut down, gone backwards. Everyone that lives in Mo Kill shops in Jackson, everyone that lives in Angels Camp shops in Sonora. I don't see how this county can keep going forward without actually coming into the real world. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, my name's Gina Gonzalez, everybody seems to know who I am. I have a question, Mr. De Vassilio. Can you test for THC right now? If I got pulled over for speeding, can you test me to see how, if I'm high or not?
Ma'am, what will happen after public comment? We'll try to answer those questions.
Because that is part of the dispensary issue, is they're not supposed to use at the, at the location. So I'm finding, and I see it right here down the street from where we're at right now, kids sitting in the car burning, doing a bong. I see it at Taco Bell in Angels Camp, doing bombs. They're getting it somewhere, it's not coming out of their trunk, it's coming from the dispensaries. I happen to know three customers that are at this dispensary here, that they get it all the time, and they give it to the high school kids. Who's watching the store? Where's this, you know, I have a problem with that. I don't want to be driving on Highway 4, driving home on a 25 mile an hour curve and getting ahead on collision with a high person. That's my issue with it. It's not being watched enough, it's not being kept clean. If it's going to be here, we have to live within the rules, and you know what? They're not living within the rules, right down the street here. How can we control it better? That's my issue with 1791. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Gentlemen, Tim McDonald, D1, I wanted to bring up the sensitive use thing, as far as the liquor store across the street from the high school. They don't just sell beer, they don't just sell liquor. They sell kids' toys. They sell kids' toys, T-shirts, ladies' undergarments, pornography, ammunition, all across the street from the high school. That's sensitive use.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Susan Morse.
Morse.
District Four. First of all, I'm not against medical marijuana. I think, I'm not against medicine when it's used appropriately. And I've never really had a concern about the dispensaries years back because I'd never been in one. I didn't know anything about it and nothing came up. But the concern I have is I was given a couple YouTube, whatever you call them, websites or whatever to look at, and one of them was Green Gold. And if you haven't, and Green Gold, I understand, is a dispensary here in San Andreas. And there was another one, I don't remember the name of it, in our county. If you go look at it, this didn't seem like they were distributing medicine. It was pretty scary. In fact, to me, it was like what I would have thought is a head shop. And then also the Secret Cup that they, event that they had here in August. If you go on the Secret Cups website and you look at what's been going on, that stuff's not medicine. That was a bunch of people showing how you can get high and how you can dab and how you can do this and that. And the sheriff even said last year at a, at an educational meeting, what dabbing does to kids. This is all part of where they're getting this stuff from. And also the other thing that's bothering me is UC Davis put out an article a while back that according to, I think it was ten or twenty tests that they did and very, maybe more than that, in various, from various dispensaries, their lab found very high percentage of fungus and bacteria. And their lab, I found out, was Steep Hill Labs in Oakland, which is a formidable lab that tests marijuana. This is my concern. So people are going there thinking they're getting medicine and there's a possibility they're not. Or it's, maybe it's medicine, but it's filled with fungus and pesticide, or not pesticides, but bacteria. So do we have in this ordinance something that makes sure that these are inspected regularly? I know it said something about a certification, but how often do you get a certification? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any board comments, questions of staff? Supervisor Mills.
Well, I think from what we've heard, this, this idea of seventeen nine one point zero seven zero, I would like to see added to the bottom a W. And the W would be to submit to a FINCEN audit. It's obvious from Sacramento County, when they, the seventeen point nine one.
W.
What type of audit did you say?
A FINCEN, F-I-N-C-E-N. Sacramento County, in their auditing, found that there was really a lot of discrepancies and the way that we might be able to have some control over whether or not we're even being reimbursed properly under Measure C, that having a Financial Crimes Enforcement Network audit would, would give us a basis or a foundation to establish that the numbers that are being provided to us are accurate. Secondly, in Q, seventeen nine one point zero seven zero Q, I would like to see the removal of cultivation from the wording there. And in seventeen nine one point one two zero, that we change that to random inspections instead of, you know, making a reasonable request that, you know, if you're going to a liquor store and you're under twenty-one and you're buying liquor, they send people in randomly and check whether or not they're complying with the law. And if the sheriff doesn't have the ability to go in and do a random check, are we really serving the purpose? So I would like to see that become a random inspection and not subject to an okay, so to speak, before arrival. The other thing is, is that I'm concerned, because the reason to remove cultivation is, is this indoor growing discharge thing has, has a, is a great concern simply because at this point, there are so many unknowns with the type of discharge that would occur and where the state has said that they're going to be exempt. That's, that's going to put the onus on CCWD or anybody else who's receiving the water calvers public as to whether or not they're capable of treating it. So I would just assume we stay away from that part until there is more known and a better understanding of what those discharges are and whether or not our municipalities are capable of handling it.
Okay. Further comments? Supervisor Top.
I, I have some questions. How many CP zones are there in the county? And how, in perspective, how, how many or near schools or residential areas? I know we discussed earlier about residential areas. There are some in there. But just overall, how many, do you have an idea of how many CP zones we do have in the county?
I don't know the exact number. I know that it's the commercial zone with the least number of parcels. I, I'm guessing it's probably in the range of about one hundred to one hundred and fifty parcels. But I think that what we've found based on the several applications that we received in the past couple of years for rezoning was that the vast majority of those are located within a thousand feet of a sensitive use and therefore are ineligible.
Eligible, okay. Of the three dispensaries that we have now, are they inspected and how often are they inspected?
We do at least an annual inspection. And then we have inspected based on complaints. We've gone out, I don't know what the sheriff's office, what their inspection record is, but as far as the planning department or code compliance, we do an inspection prior to any renewal. And then we will also inspect if we receive complaints.
Does code enforcement do any inspections? Or is it just the planning commission, or the planning department does the inspection prior to the reissue of an AUP?
It would be either or. In some cases, we've had code go out and, but we've always had a planner go, go out as well prior to any renewal.
Well, I, I, I would like to see them inspected a minimum of twice a year and at their cost, those inspections. And, and during those inspections, not only to conform to whatever use permit that they have on file, what uses they can and can't do, but also inspection of their records that are kept on dispersion and, and their incoming so we can show that they are in compliance with the upcoming codes of, of the standards of what they're selling and process, selling as a final use. And again, I would like to see it at their cost, much like an inspection of the job site, when you get a permit, the costs associated with that. And any outside labs that come in to do any specialty inspections are paid for by the owner for those inspections that then become part of the record. I also have a question as part of any inspections. Of the three that we have currently, I don't know if they have websites. It was brought up by one person that he went to a website of a grower, but I'm not sure that we have any of those that have websites. And as part of the monitoring of them or part of their inspection, I think that it should be monitored on what content they have on their website as part of the conditions of what they're, they're saying they're selling and what it is. And also those inspections, I think, being done twice yearly, at least one of them should be a random, unannounced, much like a, a restaurant when code enforcement goes in to do an inspection. It's unannounced. They, they show up randomly. So those are the conditions, some of the conditions I would like to see placed on this ordinance.
And I just, some of the concerns that you raised, Supervisor Topfeli, are also addressed in the state law. They have very strict false advertising rules and what have you, but we can cite to the state law if that would, or.
Yeah, my concerns are that I, I think they need to be proper ones and you can use the state law where you want to associate it with that. But I think it needs to be, I'd like to see it spelled out.
Sure. And you're not saying that you want to regulate the content of what they put on their website, only that you want to make sure that the, that there's not false advertising going on, correct?
Correct, and, and that they're, they're not advertising something out of compliance or interstate, you know, we're shipped to you, you know, in Iowa or whatever. So they're within compliance. I think that should be part of it.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I have comments on this issue, but District Attorney York made a special trip back. I'd like to hear from her on a staff basis. Thank you for coming back. District Attorney here.
Thank you. Barbara Yook, District Attorney. I just wanted to address section seventeen nine one 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 zero E. This is a section that says that each day is a separate violation. There is another section above that says that any violation is a misdemeanor. So I think as far as this is an attempt to say that we could charge a separate misdemeanor for each day a violation is occurring, there is a problem with the language. So if that is the intent, my request would be to take out the last sentence of subsection E as far as it states that it is every day is a continuing violation. That would be in conflict. And conflicts that are to the benefit of a criminal defendant are resolved in favor of the defendant. So it's either each day is a violation or it's one violation for each day that's continuing. So if the intent is that each day be a separate violation, we need to take out that last sentence. I believe that is the same language that is in the cultivation ordinance. So if you are considering that or when you are considering that, I would just point that out as well and say that it would be up to you to fix that or not fix it.
Board chair.
But that is the result.
I would just comment on that in the sense that that language is there for fines, not so much about the misdemeanor charges so that a fine can continue to accrue for each day for each violation. And so it's not just a single violation per day, but that each violation, that it continues to exist each day and so there can be compounding fines. That's what the purpose is.
So insofar as that would be read in the favor of a criminal defendant, then it needs to be separated out perhaps so that both those intents can be supported. So if, if, you know, that's fine to read it in that context, but I was pointing it out to you that in the application in a criminal case, that is what would occur. So it needs to be separated out somehow if the intent was that each day could be a separate criminal violation.
Do you understand it, Mr. Mallor?
Yes, yes, I would need to work with counsel to clarify that language and Barbara to make sure that, clarify the intent there and don't create a conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming back.
District Attorney York. I did have a question. Thank you. Because I, I had that doubt on my sheet as a question as well. Would you recommend possibly adding an F section in here with that wording rather than trying to?
You know, without standing here and trying to wordsmith, I would, I would leave that up to the drafters. I think, I think the point is clear. I'm sure Julie understands.
Yeah, no, our office can work with the DA. I know the planning commission reworded some of the language for the criminal piece and we can work together to make sure, I'm sure the planning commission would intend not to interfere with the DA's.
Okay, that was. Thank you, because that was one of the things that I had a concern about is that language in there didn't fit. So I'm glad you came back and confirmed what I was already thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Guerra Mendy.
Obviously, there's a lot of work that we still have to do on this document. We have to incorporate some of the stuff we talked about policy wise with having the sheriff involved. The DA, Supervisor Topfeli had some good suggestions as well. I might suggest that we, we pick this up after you guys incorporate all this new data. I, I don't know how we could vote on this when you've got all this stuff.
I think we would need to have, we haven't had votes on any of these policy suggestions. So I think that we would really need to make sure that there, for each separate change to the document in front of you from a policy point perspective, that we would want to know where, what the board's wishes are with respect to all those different policies.
Were you able to list as we were going through all this, what the key policy questions you have for us are? And we could just sort of check them off and then you guys could take it back and finish baking this cake and then we look at it again?
I've heard, I've heard a lot of the boards. I don't know to the extent to which the board wants to consider any of the public's recommended policy changes. I think we would probably need to hear a little bit more deliberation on what changes everybody is happy with.
Let's, let's look at this approach. Why don't we do it by board poll on each individual note you have there for changes? And that, can we do that, counsel, as far as direction from the board? I believe we can without motions. And that way it'll give you an idea of how we need the draft structured to come back to the board. But I want to go back just a moment to Supervisor Topfeli's comments regarding inspections by, by yearly. Is there a way that that can be done through the licensing process? Such as a renewal of a six-month business license? Or does that have to be determined through just a normal code compliance inspection or sheriff's department inspection? I'm just trying to find the mechanics of that.
I'm not sure, is it, was he asking you?
We do, Sheriff's Department does inspections annually and they're unannounced. We can up that if you so choose. If we have a problem, then that changes everything. Then we go in and do other inspections and/or investigations.
I have to go back to the ABC, alcoholic beverage control inspections on enforcing B and P, Business and Profession Codes. Supervisor Topfeli, there is no restriction on going in undercover, if you will? They do that quite, quite often. And I think that same process can apply here where they don't have to be announced. They can be undercover operations. And I think that's just an enforcement policy with, with our law enforcement.
I, I don't read the existing language as prohibiting random inspections. State law doesn't, I don't see state law prohibiting them. If the board would prefer us to actually add words that could be at random, if that would make everybody happy, we could easily do that.
Okay. Well, just some.
As far as the, you know, when the inspections are done, you know, we can inspect it anytime. If we find a violation, we can process a revocation at any time. I think to have a renewal process that is any shorter than a year, we're just constantly just processing paper at that point in time. I think if we, we identify a violation from the sheriff's office, from the state, for whatever reason, we get complaints and we can verify that there's a violation, we can set it for revocation. The administrative use permits, I have the ability to, to do that, subject to appeal. The conditional use permit would take it to the planning commission for, for revocation process.
Thank you. I'm going to interject here real quick. Staff and, and board, do we want to continue through the lunch hour or do you want to take a lunch break? I'll have to, I'll have to resort to Diane. What would you like to do, Quirk? I'll have to resort to Diane. What would you like to do, Quirk?
I don't know how long this discussion has been in place, so I always think it would be an important day.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, she has spoken.
Before we go, I have one question, though, relating back to what we were just discussing before we leave it. Sheriff, when you do your inspections, part of what I brought this up was, is the fact that we need, you made statements earlier about not recovering any costs unless it was brought up. I'm interested in recovering the cost from the owners of these, for these inspections, much like you do in, in the building trades when you call for inspection. And I think that's why I was saying that it was maybe twice a year. It could be more if you'd like, or whatever randomly that you decide if you think there's some type of undercover that needs to be done. But I'm interested in somehow having this, the cost recovered for these inspections through the owners. Again, much like the building trades.
Well, I would defer to county council as far as how often we could charge for going in doing an inspection. I think doing an inspection annually and charging for that is, is fine. I don't know if it's kind of double doing if planning does it and we do it at the same time. And to go to Chair Olivera's comment, if we find that we're having an issue or if the sheriff's department as a whole just decides, okay, we're going to start doing what we call a shoulder tap, is basically we put in an undercover person and go in and try and buy something from the dispensary that they shouldn't be selling to a juvenile or whoever it may be. That's just an operation that we're going to do just like we do for alcohol. So that's, that's a separate issue. That's just, you know, something the sheriff's offices does to try and keep everybody in compliance. But as far as the inspections, we would do, we do them annually and to recover costs, I'm all for that. I just don't know if it's double doing, having planning doing their own inspection.
I would just chime in that if, if it's a requirement of the ordinance that each dispensary undergo two inspections annually, that is something that, that we could certainly draft into the ordinance. As far as cost recovery, we do not currently have a fee for inspections, but that would be something that staff could look into, do a fee study and bring that fee forward for consideration. I know that currently planning's fee schedule for CUPs, AUPs include essentially processing all of the applications. And I would imagine that would include the initial inspection because that is included as part of the processing of the original permit.
Just I'd agree with that. We, you know, we have the ability to recover our costs. It'd be much like the COOPA program or health inspection where they, those costs are included in whatever kind of annual license or permit that they, they have. So we would need to look at what it actually costs. I don't think there's a problem with, you know, double dipping, you know, if it costs the sheriff's department to do an inspection and it costs planning to do an inspection, that's a part of doing business. So we can certainly look at that. We'd need a little bit more research when we come back with a fee resolution change to make sure we get full cost recovery on that.
Good. This might be an opportune time to take a lunch break. Let's return at, say it's 12:30, 1:30, 1:45. 1:45, ladies and gentlemen.
I give you that, but I'd like, you can take care of the other one.
What's that? Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We'll continue with our discussion on the board on item number two on today's agenda. Yesterday's agenda would be item number five. And just as a recap, sir, you have your hand up. Is there a reason? Could I help you?
My disability, I will not make it this morning. Is there any way I can go out and just speak?
I'm afraid public comment is over on this particular item, sir.
I have an opportunity to speak, but I'll do it.
I don't believe we have a public comment left for today. Oh, wait a minute. We do. We have to continue from, for the public comment from yesterday. You will have an opportunity to speak, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Counsel, we are ready to, as I understand it, we're going to be going over these suggested items.
I, I put together along with Mr. Maurer, a list of the policy changes from the Planning Commission recommendation that I heard discussed among board members. And so I want to walk through that and then the board can let me know, let us know if there's anything that we feel we missed. And that would give us guidance for what we need to write and bring back to you some later point.
Excellent.
Can we, can we poll on Jean Twain as she brings them up? Just go poll and then go on to the next one.
I believe that would be the best way to handle that. Thank you, Supervisor Tofanelli. And we'll do each individual item so we're all clear and get you good direction, folks.
Okay. I think the first ones, I'd like to just go through what the sheriff recommended and make sure that there is a consensus and that the way that I've interpreted these things are the same. The recommendation or what the sheriff recommended was that he has unilateral discretion to deny a dispensary use permit based on background check results subject to review for abuse of discretion.
Any confusion? Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Supervisor Garimendi?
I'm fine with that.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera says yes.
Okay. And then these, I think this is pretty easy, but citations and/or seizures issued by the state must be reported to the sheriff as well as to planning.
Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Garimendi?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Olivera, yes.
Under 1791-070 subsection S, as in SAM, material changes to premises that are described in the state license have to be reported to both planning and the sheriff, and the sheriff must approve these changes to the extent they would impact the security of the premises.
You good with that, Mr. Maurer?
Yes.
Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Garimendi?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera, yes.
And planning reports any evidence it receives that dispensary, the dispensary may be engaging in interstate commerce to the sheriff.
Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Garimendi?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera, yes.
Okay.
There was one, there was one that we missed there. It was under L and it was adding and the sheriff's department. Permit holders to secure the premises in accordance with security plan approved by the planning department and the sheriff's office.
Right.
And sheriff's office.
Yes.
Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Garimendi?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera, yes.
So the next issue on our list was about cultivation. I think that the fundamental question is, do you want to allow cultivation at all? And so that would, I think, be the first poll to take is, do you want to allow cultivation or do you want to have it limited as the planning commission has or a variation on that? So whether to?
I'd like to discuss that. I think that should be a board discussion. I'll let you go first, Supervisor Mills.
Oh, sorry, my light was on.
Supervisor Garimendi? Any comment? Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yeah, I have, they recommend a 400-foot canopy size, indoor canopy size is what the recommendation is. And I don't feel comfortable with that size. I would be in favor of 100 square feet, which I think is what the current one is, if I'm not mistaken.
Is, is that canopy sized or square footage?
Square footage, but it's canopy, square footage.
Well, the way we've defined, you can define canopy size how you want. The way we've defined it under the urgency ordinance was that it includes the space between the plants. It's the outer perimeter of the canopy at its most mature point.
This is indoor cultivation?
Correct.
I would like to add, provided that the, if it's going to be in a municipal sewer system situation, that the municipal sewer system has a right to respond, you know, as to what's being put into their system, whether or not it's a problem for them.
Is there any restriction on to water filtration that we are aware of on a state level?
No.
Is there anything on the county level?
I have not reviewed all of the state. I assume we would just be complying with state law requirements. They, I know they've asked the state water board to develop specific requirements for cannabis. Yeah, and I don't know what all of those are.
Well, as I said earlier today, the discharge requirements, per the document that was released yesterday, was that they were exempt. And so therefore, until we're assured that they're not exempt and that there can be some control, we need to have some control from a county level to ensure that we're not impacting our municipal sewer systems.
May I make a suggestion that we get that information back from our consultant regarding that issue on item number one? Maybe we can dovetail that information into this item.
Board Chair, I just, I believe that what Supervisor Mills was referring to is a recent report that was issued yesterday, not the report that he submitted into the record earlier today in item number one.
I have the impression that that report from the state water quality control board would be looked at also.
Two separate reports.
Right.
And so the report that was issued by the state yesterday, that is something that certainly we would be looking into. One thing to consider is certainly we would be incorporating anything that the board directed us to. However, our office would intend to issue a legal memo to the board if in implementing any of your policy decisions or directions, there are some legal implications. We would certainly be writing a memo to you so you were aware between now and the item coming back so you knew, including that review of that recent report, our analysis of that.
Okay, in other words, the issue will be addressed. Good enough for you, Supervisor?
Yes, sir.
Two different issues.
Yeah, two different issues.
Two different issues. One is the water and one is?
The size. Or are they?
Canopy size.
Canopy size. Let's deal with the water first.
Do we want to bifurcate?
Is that acceptable, what council just stated, that they're going to be looking at both reports? And if it's affecting this particular agendaized item, she'll be notifying by a memo. Is that correct? Okay. Is that good enough for you?
Yes.
Okay. Let's deal with the size of the indoor cultivation regarding dispensaries. 400 feet, 400 square feet or canopy size?
It's up to you.
Okay, we can make that determination?
I would be 100 square feet since it's indoor. And again, I think that's what the current is, is 100.
And you mean canopy size, the perimeter around the plant?
100 square feet of the building itself that is being grown in.
Of the building itself?
That's right.
What is the current, what is the current?
Currently, we, we kind of followed the way the state did it, except we made sure to include the space between the plants. It was total canopy area, which is the perimeter around the canopy at its most mature. But you're not limited to that.
That was, that was for the indoor too?
No, that was for, the way we?
I think you're referring to the way that we measure things under the urgency ordinance. I think what the board is asking is if there is a requirement under our current dispensary ordinance on the size of grow that is allowed within the current dispensary.
I think, if I remember correctly, I analyzed all this for the Planning Commission and then haven't gone back to look at the old one before today. But I believe we, it was actually a per plant, six plants per patient. I don't know that there was any?
Six plants per patient.
I don't know that there was a square footage. I don't think there was a square footage requirement on the current.
Can, can we look into that before we make that decision?
It was a number of plants. I'm trying to find it right now, looking it up.
Actually.
And while that's going on, I do have a question for, for counsel. How would this affect any funding from the state under Prop 64 as far as indoor cultivation? Were we able to share into that funding? Is there an issue with that?
I have no idea. I haven't looked at the Prop 64 funding stream in terms of how limited we can be and still receive, or it would be considered a ban. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
We're probably going to need to take a look at that.
Here's what the current ordinance says. A medical cannabis dispensary may possess no more than eight ounces of dried cannabis per qualified patient or caregiver and maintain no more than six mature and 12 immature cannabis plants per qualified patient. However, if a qualified patient or primary caregiver has a doctor's recommendation, this quantity does not meet the qualified patient's medical needs, the dispensary may possess an amount of cannabis consistent with the patient's needs.
Really doesn't address it, does it?
It doesn't. I mean, so it's, it's based on plants and that, so you could impose a canopy size or square footage restriction if you wanted to.
And I would just note that this, the current dispensary ordinance was adopted long, I mean, it was back in 2010?
2005.
2005, 2005. So it was long before our current laws are the MRSA, ALMA, and now MAU-CURSA.
So just to make sure that the board understands that when, when this draft ordinance was brought to the Planning Commission, the direction from the Planning Commission was to take what existed in 1791 and as much as possible translate that into a MAU-CURSA compliant version. And that's, that's what we've done. You can add or take away from that as you want, but what you have is 1791, as much as possible into a MAU-CURSA compliant version.
We, we have a number of plants.
Right. And you can change that to?
And we can change that to square footage of grow area or square footage of canopy size?
Either.
Okay. Comments?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm done, I'm done.
Can you tell me where, did they have a discussion on this 400-foot that they recommended and where they came up with the 400?
I think they were trying, they had asked some questions about what was existing. Mr. American helped me out with this. They tried to get a sense of what the existing dispensaries were using and decided that 400 square feet was similar to what was currently being used. And that that, we can't go by plants per patient because that's not, that could be unlimited.
Yeah, it could be unlimited, that's correct.
And that doesn't really dovetail anymore with the model being used under the state anyway where they want you to quantify size and a lot when it comes to cultivation. So, so they decided 400 square feet. I believe the intent was that it best memorialize what we have now without allowing expansion of it.
So that 400, that 400 square feet would represent six mature plants? I don't know the size of it. I don't know. If they try to keep what it was, it says six mature plants and 12?
Per patient.
Per patient.
So that could be unlimited.
So that's what I'm trying to, where the 400 would come up.
The 400 came from, I think, the building sizes and the space to grow that were, that were anticipated by the existing buildings, right? Whatever space.
Yeah, so we're talking about an area of about 20 by 20.
Right. Exactly. That's 20, 10 by 10 is 100, so.
20 by 20.
20.
10 by 10.
Would be 400 square feet with the planning committee. 10 by 10 obviously would be the 100 square feet. So given the size of the existing facilities, that's probably the maximum amount that any one of them could actually cultivate within the existing facility under their existing permits. And so what they were trying to find is something that was reasonably related to what they might have the right to do today under their existing permits.
Could we set a maximum of 400 square feet?
Yes. That's what they asked, that's what they recommended.
Doesn't even depend on what size of the building, no matter what. It's going to be 400 square feet.
That's what they recommended. You could, yes.
Yeah, it's a maximum. It doesn't say maximum, but it is what they're recommending. Limited to 400 square feet.
I would, I would like to see the word maximum in there.
Okay.
That will prevent warehouses.
But you were, but you were saying 100 feet.
Yeah, I was saying 100 feet. I'm kind of reconsidering that now. Now they gave me where they came from. Somewhere I thought I'd read 100 square feet is what was existing. And I didn't want to move it up. But I'm following in their train of thought, I think, on where they came up with the 400. And, and based on 20 by 20, I don't think you can get a whole lot in there on 20 by 20.
Do we have any growers in the room?
Could we, could we add something into the discussion? Is a number of counties have also included in the grow area that there be no carpet in the grow area. Don't know why they've done that, but there, there has to be a reason. So I would like to investigate whether or not that should be included in that decision.
I don't think you could just say that if everybody wants to say no carpet, you count up the concern is water getting in there and mold. But that's the type of regulation that you would have discretion to make.
Ladies and gentlemen, hold on for a minute. Counsel, can we solicit this type of information from the public if we need that information as far as procedures and how marijuana is grown and what's required? Yes or no? Can we solicit that information from our gallery?
Certainly, the board chair has the discretion to ask a question if anyone in the public has the information to offer to the board. That is in the chair's discretion. Otherwise, you can ask staff to look into it and report back. That's the alternative.
That's the alternative.
Well, before you even make that decision, I would ask the board, does anybody have any experience in why carpet is used or not used in growing marijuana? I guess not.
You could, in the building code for bathrooms, kitchens, it's written you have to have a scrubbable surface.
Okay.
So I mean, so you could do stuff like that without saying, you can't have carpet, but it has to be a scrubbable surface, like in the walls has to be saved. And in fact, you...
Why do we want to regulate something we don't even know what we're doing it?
Because we're making an ordinance.
Do we need a law for everything?
I'm sorry?
Do we need a law for everything? Is this something we need to be dealing with?
You have a lot of discretion to regulate more specific than the state.
Pick the paint color, I mean...
I, I think what we want to do is not open the door to go, I have to go back to auto racing rules of the folks who want to run the race, not win the race, I guess. So the bottom line is, we want to make rules that will be, number one, reasonable but enforceable. Am I wrong there?
You're absolutely right. I think that, you know, as long as you, the rules are serving a broader public purpose to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public, since we've done it, then you have broad discretion to enact those, those kinds of rules. So if you feel that prohibiting carpet does that, then that's certainly within the realm of your discretion to do so.
I'm going to exercise some authority here as chair, and I'm going to ask from the public, have you ever heard, number one, Mr. Whitty?
Yes.
Are you a grower, obviously?
Yes, I am.
Yes, sir. Why would they have a requirement for carpeting on an indoor cultivation site, if you know?
The requirement would be to preclude it, correct? So, yeah, so it's to not allow carpeting. I do think that it's actually for the reason that Supervisor Clapp referenced, is to have a scrubbable surface and for the possibility of molds. Because in an indoor environment, there is a very high, there's high humidity when you're growing inside, and so when you have a carpeting or something covering a wall surface, it creates the possibility for molds to grow in between that area, and that's the only reason I could possibly see why it would be an issue, is because of mold.
Yes, sir.
And actually, carpeting would be a detriment to the grower.
We're going to, we're going to make you use the microphone there. Can we get that adjusted for you?
Carpeting or some type of cover on the walls or the ground would make it a detriment to the grower because you're trying to avoid molds.
Okay.
So the grower, in the grower's best interest is to have a clean surface, and the best surface would be something that they can wash and clean after every grow. They have to sterilize it so that they don't, every time they go into the room, they're bringing in contaminants. And those contaminants need to be cleaned out of that room because if you leave them in there, it will harm your next grow. Most things are always sterilized before they're used again, and that's, that's critical to the growth of the plant. I'd like to also say something on the canopy, if I can. The canopy size is based upon the room size. And the smaller the room, the smaller the plant. You can't have plants real close to each other, otherwise they're not going to grow. So you have to space them out a little bit so that they can grow. But at the same time, if you're restricting the room size to a square footage, then you're restricting the growth of the plant. And you may have a, as I say, you have a canopy now that's so reduced, it's not going to provide enough for the patient. It'd be better to do it based on the size of the canopy and leave the room at a larger size. That way they can walk around it, they can keep it clean, and they can have the canopy that they need. That's my, my own feeling. If I was going to grow a room, I'm disabled, I can't get around a room if I'm having plants that are, sorry about that, if I have plants that take up all the space. So I need to have pathways to go down at least the middle and on sides. And for me to have a room that's smaller than would permit that, that would be an obstruction to me as a disabled person. So I think you would find legalities there. I would challenge that, and I would get an attorney to challenge that because I would be at harm as a, as a disabled person. So I think you're bringing yourself into an area by sizing the room at 100 feet that you don't want to go. That's my opinion.
So ADA might be a consideration here then.
Is there a point of order, please?
I hear your point of order at the microphone, sir.
I hope the chairman will explain exercising his prerogative to call citizens out of the audience to presumably give some credible information. We have no idea whether these people are experts or what their training may be. And if that, if that could be extended to other supervisors whenever they feel the need to get information by just calling someone out of the audience and asking them a question. You know, we have no reason to believe that either the two people you've spoken to have any experience in the area that you were questioning. Either that, or they should be required to become an expert witness like people who maybe appear at the table to help staff. Thank you.
Point of order, I'm disabled and as a disabled person...
Let me rule on the first point of order. Mr. McManus, your point of order was heard, and I feel that we were in the rules, regulations, and confines of our duties as county supervisors and as board chair. The decision rests with the chair after checking with council. Thank you for your comments, but your point of order is not recognized as valid. What's your point of order, sir?
My point of order is based upon that, and I've...
We're not going to get into an argument, I've already ruled on it. I'm not, I'm not going to regard his, his point of order.
To somebody to tell me I'm not disabled is wrong.
Oh, not, okay, sir. We'll take that in consideration. Thank you. Where are we at now?
So we were discussing indoor cultivation, I think, size, and again, whether it should be allowed at all were the two questions that we had additionally raised was whether or not we should have some type of review and approval by the sewer provider, if it's on public sewer. And then there's the issue of carpet, whether or not that, that, you wanted to add provisions regarding carpeting.
Let's deal with the size first. Is, is there any other information from the board other than a 400 square foot area in a building? Is there any further comment on that? 400, good with everybody?
I'm fine with it.
Supervisor Garrett? Supervisor Clapp?
No.
Supervisor Mills? I'm good with it. Three, two.
Just the way the planning commission recommended was a maximum of 400 square foot, feet of total canopy area. So it's measured by canopy.
Maximum.
And maximum.
Maximum?
Are you...
Poll the board. Supervisor Tofanelli? Supervisor Garamendi?
Yes.
Supervisor Clapp? Supervisor Mills? I'm good with it.
So the next issue was the concept of distribution of a wholesale product to the lab.
Hold on, we have the carpet issue, I think it was.
Yeah, the carpet issue. Do we need to discuss that further? It's my understanding that carpet would be a source of mold, and it should not be used in a cultivation site inside the building. Is that correct? Did I, we understand that correctly? Supervisor Tofanelli?
I'm in favor.
Supervisor Garamendi?
I think we're regulating... Yes, I'm fine with that.
Supervisor Clapp?
I'd be happier with the words scrubbable floor instead of just no carpet because you could do other things that would be just as bad. I, I think you should buy, follow the unified building code. I mean, they regulate the type of bathroom I put in my house. They regulate I have to have a door separation between the bathroom and the kitchen. I mean, why are we trying to rewrite?
Let, let's consider this. Let's go on the poll, current poll for the carpet issue, then I would entertain another poll saying it must be cleanable, scrubbable surfaces.
Okay. I'll go with that.
All right, so we're going to take care of the first poll. You're against the carpeting?
Yes.
I mean, you're against not having, the term used carpeting?
Right.
And the term used carpeting, and I would be against that also. So that's defeated. So let's talk about scrubbable, cleanable surfaces.
How do I define that?
Scrubbable, cleanable surfaces.
UBC.
I'm going to have, I'm going to be in court over what's scrubbable.
No, Uniform Building Code...
Cleanable.
Uniform Building Code does provide the standard.
You do have a point, council.
The building code, does it stand for that?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Do you want to refer to the building code?
Yes, ma'am.
We can refer to the building code. Would, everybody on board with that?
What's that?
We're going to refer to the building code regarding scrubbable, cleanable surface. Is that a term scrubbable?
Goes for walls, too.
Okay. Can you deal with that in court, council?
Certainly if there's an existing definition that we're entitled to use that helps, do you happen to have the citation?
I think that this would be a prime example of a topic that we will move forward with, with putting the language in. However, we would include it in a confidential memo to the board if there are any concerns about the vagueness or the definition of what is scrubbable or cleanable.
You can figure that out. Okay. We're going to poll on that. Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Garamendi?
Scrubbable, cleanable, yes.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
And I also agree. All right, next issue.
The third one. Sewers. Municipal sewer.
Sewer? I was under pressure we were going to give more research on that, the water quality.
Oh, that's right. You're right.
We were going to do that. Next item?
So, one of the things that was difficult to translate from 1791 that we have now into MAU-CURSA compliance is the concept of distribution. The concept of distribution of a wholesale cannabis product to a lab and then to a retail outlet is a new concept under state law. It has not yet been implemented at the state level. So all cannabis now has to be sent to a lab by a distributor. And because of that, the board could, if it wanted to, allow dispensaries to continue to grow since we're allowing cultivation. We can allow them to grow their own products on that limited scale to 400 square feet and then let, have them send it to a lab and then receive back their products to sell at the retail level. Now, that's something, distribution, taking the cannabis and taking, sending it to a lab and then providing it to a retailer is usually done under a separate distribution license, which we could require, and we'll get into microbusiness later. But normally, a distributor would be able to go to any, to any cannabis source, whether it's, you know, another cultivation site or whatever, and take the cannabis and take it to a lab and then send it to any retailer. We could limit the existing dispensaries or the dispensaries that will be growing only 400 square feet, that they can take only their own cannabis to a lab and receive only their, and receive that cannabis back in order to sell it without them having to have, sell it to a distributor or contract with the distributor and then basically buy it back in so many words. So we could allow them to do this within these restrictions, but we would have to use the word distribution or allow them to do distribution in addition to what we have right now. So I guess the question is, do we want to, the real question is, do you want to let them take their own 400 square feet of total canopy size, send it as the distributor of their own product to a lab, get it certified, take it back and sell it inside of their own shop? Do we want to allow them to do that is the next question.
What was the recommendation from the planning commission on that?
This is something where we actually didn't get into the distribution piece. I know the planning commission did, did not want them to be allowed to do additional distribution for other growers back and forth. They wanted, they wanted everything limited to the scale of the shops that they have right now. But I don't believe or don't remember the issue being addressed. Do you remember, Mr. Mallory?
I don't think we, the commission did not specifically address that issue. They were, as Julie pointed out, wanted to limit any kind of activity to just what they were doing on site.
And what was also specifically, well, what was allowed under 1791? This is a gray area because this is a new requirement under state law that they can't sell their product until it goes to a lab and back. So the question is, do we want to let them take it to the lab and back to their shop? Or do we want to make somebody else, which would have to be a state licensed distributor elsewhere, take their product to the lab and back? That's the question.
Comments? Everybody in the room, your lights on?
Everybody's lights on.
Everybody's lights on.
I'll, I'll go first.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have, like, if I'm doing a rehab on a house, there's mold and stuff, I have a person come in, they take the samples out, they take them back, so it's not contaminated in the process, they know how to handle it. And so in building, there's an outside agency that comes in, picks up the material, and then sends us back a report, if there is mold, what type of mold, and if it's hazardous or not. So I, I would think my, I would be comfortable with someone coming and picking it up that does the service. They would know how to handle it, it would be more...
So that's a little different because in the building trades, the people that pick it up are probably the same ones that do the testing.
Exactly.
So in this case, the testing facility is totally independent, and they have a separate license, a testing license. This would be a third party then that would have to pick it up, take it to an independent tester and then, you know, back. So it would be, rather than the, you as a contractor, taking the material to an independent testing lab and then bringing it back if it's still good or whatever you do with it. In this case, the, the dispensary would either have to contract with a distributor, then the distributor takes it to a third-party lab, and then the third-party lab sends it back to either the same or different distributor, back to the dispensary. Or alternatively, the dispensary could get a just limited distribution license to take his product, his or her product, to the independent tester and then return it to the, that, those are the two options we have.
Yeah, we even do that with water. If I check a well, see if it's palpable water, it's a procedure that's done so it's not contaminated from point A to point B. And we're talking about class one narcotic. We're not talking about drinking water.
The question is, do you want, so if, if the dispensary owner does it themselves, they have to meet all the straight state criteria and receive some sort of state license to be a distributor, okay? They have to, they would need a different, an additional licensure to do that. The question is, do we want them to be allowed to do it if they have that license? Or do we want to make them have to use a third party? And I don't, I guess the question is, would a third party somehow be safer or better for the county than them doing it if they both have the same license?
I would not have a problem if the person's licensed doing it. They would know how to handle the product. So as long as a person's licensed, I would not have a problem as long as it was a licensed person doing it.
They would have to do that in order to train, to distribute it, to...
So that, so Supervisor Clapp, you'd be for a third party?
I would be for either way as long as it's licensed, just the person who's doing it.
I have to rely back on, on, not necessarily cannabis, but heavy-duty construction, heavy-duty engineering. We take soil samples, send them out to have them tested. We collect our own samples, package them up. It's, it's sent through a certified method of, of transportation, US Post Office, as long as it's not contaminated. FedEx, that type of thing. And then we get the results back from the lab. I think good businesses, if you do it right, by the rules and regulations, why do we throw another party in there? Business one-on-one, cut expenses. But you have to be certified to do that, probably trained. That's another avenue we could look at. How do you do water samples, Supervisor Mills? Do you have to be certified to collect it and transport it? Or can you do it like we do in soil engineering?
Oh, you have to be certified.
Have to be certified to collect the sample? Maybe that's, that's the certification we need now.
Well, that's, that's the question is, is why did the state write in a third-party option here? There, there must have been a reason for doing that.
So they, they, the state definitely wanted a set of skills, and this, I think the distributors also have to collect the tax for the state. There's, there's a number of things that are just distributor duties. They're laid out in MAU CERSA. And it is, as a result of those separate duties, including security for transport, there's a lot of requirements. So, they don't allow ju, just a cultivator or just a manufacturer to, or just a retailer to do it. They would have to prove to the state that they're capable of doing these things and get a license for it. So, the answer is, there's a separate license because it is a separate set of skills, duties and requirements. I guess the question would be, if we're going to require a third party to do it, what's the difference if they, they happen to also be the local distributor? If you see a difference, we can require that. But we don't have to because the, the standards for a third-party operator and for a dispensary owner who is successful in receiving the license are the same requirements.
I'm thinking from an accounting standpoint of checks and balances, that when you eliminate that intermediate in there, you've removed one of the checks and balances to potential improper conduct. So, I would be more in favor of a third party.
Comments?
Maybe you can clarify something to me. I thought under the, the MAU CERSA guidelines and going back to the original MRSA, if you possessed one license, you could not print, possess the other license.
It's changed.
It has changed, so you can't have, you can't have multiple licenses?
You can have multiple licenses, yes. And it's, you could only have, there's, the way the state currently has language, it's one license per premises, but a premises can be an individual part of a building or an individual part of parts. So, yeah, the short answer is, you can have multiple licenses.
So, you, you now can possess multiple licenses? So, then the next question is, open, opening this door and, and they get a license to transport, allowing them to get a license to transport, does that open the door for them to then be a courier or for other growers?
We would, it does, the license, if we limit what they can do on their dispensary with the, and with the distribution, that each license has to be tied to a particular facility. So, if they get a license from the state, but the county says, we're only allowing them to distribute their own grown product in-house, that's the limit to what we're allowing distribution, we can be stricter. They would have a license, but the, they wouldn't be allowed to exercise those licensure options in the county. They would, they would be restricted to the local stricter requirements. So, we don't open the door if we craft language allowing them to grow their own. We don't open the door, we don't have to open the door to them, then getting to transport other people's products to different retailers or to their own retailer.
All right. Well, normally, in, in the building trades, when you do soil samples or, or even welding samples, that's done by an independent lab that has been hired by the owner and okayed through the city or the county or whatever jurisdiction that, that building is in. And it's, it is a third party that conducts those, such as Crozan or, or Kleinfelders or have you. I, I very rarely, I don't know if, if it's even possible for the owner to do their own soil samples unless it's a lab constructing their own building that's certified to do that. So, I, I would, I would tend to go to a third party just to keep it clean, that, that they transport separately through an independent agent.
Chairpin? Not only if you're getting lab samples and stuff, then like I'm getting impact, compression tests and stuff, I have to have it under supervi, supervision of an structural engineer on top of that. So, it's not just like I do my test or have, someone does the compaction test for me. He has to be underneath a, a civil engineer's license to do that, too.
So, just understand, the laboratory, the testing of the actual samples is going to be done by a certified lab, and the certified lab that's licensed cannot do anything else but testing. They are not allowed to also be a transporter, dispenser, distributor, all of that.
That was my next question. Is that something the lab would provide? Is transportation pickup and delivery?
No, no. So, it's a distributor, somebody with a distributor's license would be transporting the product. So, you'd have to, so I wouldn't worry about, the, the testing would be done by an independent lab, but if you wanted there to be somebody separate than the dispensary owner, taking their product to the lab and back to them, then we can not allow them to be their own distributor.
That would be the cleanest way, then.
So, what are we exactly saying we're going to do? They cannot be their own distributor, they can't be their own distributor?
I don't know. What are you, what are you saying?
That's what we're discussing. The cleanest way, from my understanding, would be to have an independent distributor pick up the sample at the dispensary, transport it or get it to the lab. That would be the cleanest way to do this, is that what you're saying?
I, I'm not going to say what's, that's a policy call for you.
I understand. I mean, the state requires, state requires what now?
The state simply requires that somebody with a licensed distributor license, okay? Somebody with a distributor license, which is different than having, being a retailer or cultivator, or a lab, that somebody with this special type of license would pick up the product that they're growing in their dispensary, take it to the lab, because it has to go to a lab to be certified, and then if they want to use their own product back in their shop, they would have to arrange some sort of sale contract or what have you with the distributor to get their own product back in their own shop.
Hi. Since we're all talking about our experiences, this very, sounds familiar with USDA trying to sell your own beef. And there are five rings of hell to get that done. Most of us who have bought it have probably broken the law to do that. It seems to me that if you grow, if we're limiting it to four hundred square feet and only the products that they've got, we're talking about just that one section between their grow and the testing and back. There's nothing else. If we strictly limited, I think we should allow people to sell tested stuff that they grow without having to add one more step in the process. Since we're all speaking of our, you know, if you want to buy a beef from me, you've got to get it done in a USDA lab, you've got to have your own kill butcher and you can't kill it on my property. So, I understand the complexities. Perhaps because I don't appreciate them, I'm more willing to let somebody sell their own stuff.
I was, I'm for what you were saying, Mike. I just thought that was cleaner, it's.
Okay. Well, poll the rest of the board. Supervisor Clapp is in agreement with making an independent distributor or licensed by the state to perform that service other than the grower and the collective, correct? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I was having an independent person come pick up. It's like what Supervisor Mills says, it's another balance on keeping the books, what's being transferred, you know, because you're having different people where all the numbers have to add up.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I'm in favor of a third, third party doing it.
Supervisor Guaramendi?
I try to work with majority, so yes.
Okay. Unanimous. We'll go that route.
So, that may add a little bit of complication. The state has not, licensing for distribution hasn't started yet. And I don't know if there are any, any of the existing dispensaries that are now cultivating, I don't know if we need to have some type of, of timeframe for that to kick in until the time there's a lic, distributor that, so, under the state law, we cannot prohibit a distributor from moving through the county. We do not need to allow any permity in the county, but someone who is licensed distributor from an adjacent county that authorizes it can operate within the county.
May, may I suggest, we're, we're, by the time this gets back to us, I don't know when it will get back to us for final approval, I'm assuming it's going to be sometime, maybe not the twenty-fourth, but the following one, November sixth. And then it won't go into effect until thirty days after that, which, which is in December. State's supposed to come on, online in January.
So, they're supposed to start issuing at least temporary licenses in January?
In January.
And then the question is, how many people have that within a reasonable?
Time, how long it will take them? So, so my suggestion is that we, we extend this particular item to at least March of twenty eighteen, and it can be brought back at that time if licenses still aren't being issued by the state or haven't been obtained or going through process. At least we could say maybe that there, the, the dispensaries are in process, they can show they're in process and have submitted their applications for this service.
Well, okay, so if we're not allowing the, the dispensaries to be their own distributors, they're not going to be applying for a distributor's license?
You're right, but, but the dispensary. The dispensary license, whoever applies for them.
So, I just, I'm just not personally familiar with the supply and demand. Did you want us to write in that for existing dispensaries, they have until March twenty eighteen?
Independent distributors, excuse me, distributors, we're, we're going to extend it until at least March of twenty eighteen for this to kick in, in order for them to have time to come online, when it comes online in January.
So, for existing dispensaries, they have until March of twenty eighteen to utilize an independent, okay?
Does that make sense? At least it gives them time and it gives a sunset date of where it'll kick in.
And then that doesn't hold up the ordinance, though?
Yeah, and if it comes in March and they can show that they are in process, the distributors are in process of getting the license, whoever they're going to use or contract with. It may not be in March when the state is, excuse me. It may not be in March when the state actually has even issued any of those licenses yet, but I think we should at least put March date on it and if, and we can revisit it come March if no license has been issued by the state.
So, bring the ordinance back to be amended?
Just this one, just this one section of it.
So far.
Just so I'm clear, so basically, the existing dispensaries would be able to continue operating, essentially transporting their own product until, to a testing site until March of two thousand eighteen, have some kind of extension if they are, if they can show that they are still in the process, but they haven't been issued the state license? Or are you wanting to amend it at that time?
So, I, that confused me a little bit, Ms. Sefell. I, the, the existing dispensaries, we need to wait for there to be an available distributor in the area for them to use? That's what we're talking about. So, I don't know that, how would they?
So, what happens between now? That's what I'm trying to understand here, is what happens between adoption of this, of this ordinance and, and there actually being a distributor in the area, i.e. in March of two thousand eighteen? So, what happens in that interim period?
Well, it's sounding like what I think Supervisor Toffenelli said is, they can continue whatever they're doing now until March.
They don't send it to a lab now because it's not required until January. Is that not correct?
Well, it has to go to.
So, so they're not distributing anywhere to any lab at this point unless they're doing it on their own because the law does not require it. So, so continuing from when this ordinance goes in December, if it gets adopted in December, it doesn't, the state's laws don't kick in until January where they were, we required from that point to take it to a lab before they can dispense it to the public. And so, I was trying to cover from January to March to allow them a little window because they may not have any license, no distributing licenses may be okay by the state, issued by the state. So, I'm saying, you know, from January to March, we'll give them a window that they'll be able to transport their own, but after March, when there's, if there's license been issued, then they're, they need to come under contract or however they're going to do it with the dispensary to, to, to come pick up their product, take it to a lab and bring it back to them, certified, which is required by the state.
And I guess, and what, and I think what you were also saying is this, right, is that if there, it appeared that there, there was evidence that there were none available that were licensed in the vicinity at that point, agenda is something to extend that one provision of the ordinance?
Just one provision, come back before us and say, we submitted our applications and, and the state hasn't issued any licenses yet. So, at least they have to have that proof to us. They can't just come and say, hey, well, there's no license. They, we need dispensaries to come in and tell us that they're in the process.
Do we have the ability to check with the state if we are inquiring about individuals' license to transport?
Yes.
Do we have that capability?
That we require it.
All right. That way we can just run a check. Okay. Everybody understand that? We'll poll. Supervisor Clapp, your first.
Sounds like the emergency ordinance all over again.
Is that a no or a yes, sir?
I say no.
Okay. Supervisor Mills?
I say no.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Guaramendi?
Yes.
I say yes.
And then I think the last question on this same topic is whether or not, since we're allowing cultivate, we're allowing two different activities, cultivation and retail sales. So, normally, you would need to have a cultivation license and a retail sales license. The state has a micro-business provision that allows four uses, two of which appears the county would not be allowing. So, the question before you is, if the dispensary owner happened to receive a state micro-business license, but the only two things we would be allowing them to do locally is to cultivate under the restrictions we just talked about and to sell under the dispensary provisions, would that be okay or do you want them to have two separate licenses entirely?
We're talking retail sales or recreational?
Normally, no, nothing recreational.
It's all medical.
No, everything is medical. Normally, for any activity you do, whether it's cultivating, manufacturing, distributing, lab, all of these things require separate state licenses. There is one provision, this type twelve micro-business license allows small-scale people who do multiple things or want to do multiple things, to do these things on a small scale under a single license. The state license allows four activities. We're not allowing four activities here. So, the question is, if they have the state license that allows these four activities, but we're saying you only get to do the activities we just decided you could do, would that be okay so that they only need to get one license as opposed to having to get two licenses? One for cultivation and one for retail sales?
Everybody understand, understand folks?
I would be in favor of two licenses, one for each process.
Supervisor Guaramendi?
I agree.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, no, not, no micro businesses.
I agree also, no micro businesses.
And then the last of these, and I'm assuming I know the answer, but manufacturing is not now allowed under seventeen ninety-one. I know some people say that that's been part of what they've been doing. This is the manufacturing of edibles and what have you. There is no requirement that the board allow these things to happen in a dispensary, and I want to verify that this is not something that you want to allow.
So, we, we do or do not want to allow, allow manufacturing?
No.
In dispensaries.
In dispensaries?
No.
Supervisor Guaramendi?
No.
Supervisor Clapp?
No.
Supervisor Mills?
No.
Supervisor Olivera? No.
And then I think, moving on down the list, was the twice yearly or random and/or random inspections. I know there was discussion before we took a break of whether we wanted to specifically write in that random inspections might be undertaken. What is it that you want to, do you want to leave it or just anything, whether it's twice or any time at random is allowed, or do you want any further language on the inspection?
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I, I would, I would leave it at twice, twice yearly, and that will leave the door open to whether we notify them or not. It's twice yearly.
I like to have the same as my barber shop, once a month.
Twice yearly would be a good idea, but we do not have to provide notification. In other words, we don't need to notify them or schedule. In other words, we don't need to notify them or schedule, schedule an inspection, which dovetails into the random. In other words, you could have one inspection in March, find a violation and come back two weeks later, inspect it twice to check.
We can just write it, that you can inspect it anytime during business hours. I think that's what we have in there right now.
Why don't, why don't we consider wording such as random inspections with a minimum of two per year? Would that work for you, Gary?
Yeah, it'd work for me at their discretion when they make it.
Yeah, whenever the Sheriff's Department or Compliance wants to do it, we don't have to notify the owner, but you're going to get inspected, you're going to get inspected at least twice a year. We can live with that?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, and then as Supervisor Tofanelli had brought up, as part of the inspection, did you want there to be a provision that at least, you know, some sort of, you know, whether it's during each of these, twice per year or separately, that there be an inspection of any advertising that's available publicly to make sure that there's nothing illegal being advertised as being for sale in the, in the dispensary?
Well, I think you know what my position was on the advertisement, so if you're trying to get me to go along with it, you better work a little bit with that or else you're getting a no vote.
Supervisor Clapp, let me please clarify. I was not talking about the extent to which they can have an advertising sign. I was referring to, and I'm not trying to get your vote, I'm trying to educate the board on what the options were that you all brought up before we left.
Well, the option I brought before you left is I want to know outside advertisement.
I understand that.
And you were going to check on that formula and so you're asking to vote on something before I, you got back to it. So you're asking me to agree with something that you never got back with me on.
Supervisor Clapp, you're not understanding. Supervisor Tofanelli had asked about whether or not the, there should be a check by looking at online websites or what have you-
Social media avenues.
To find out, by an independent person, enforcement official, to see whether there was any sort of false advertising occurring or advertising of illegal products in the store. That is a separate question from your question about the sign. I will look up your case about the sign.
I just sense what you'd forget about.
My concerns were social media sites such as website, Facebook pages and Twitter and so forth and all those. What is part of any inspection during the year on, on any of these dispensaries to make sure they're not advertising such as what was brought up in the public comments section, that they'll ship to Iowa or Nebraska or wherever off of, orders off of their site, if they're taking sites or if they're dispensing anything that's illegal. I think in this day and age, something like that probably needs to be done, and we could, since there's only three of them, we can randomly look at any of their available sites that they're advertising on. It had nothing to do with outdoor billboards or anything like that. That was my concern that I brought up as part of any inspection that we do, and you certainly don't need to go on site to do that. That can be done from in-house to access any of their media sites. That's what I was concerned about, and that's what I was asking about.
I'm for that.
Mr. Mauer, do we have a sign ordinance, ordinance in this county?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Is there any way we can incorporate the outdoor signage to accommodate Supervisor Clapp into that ordinance, or do we have to keep it in this ordinance?
We can amend our code in any way that you feel is appropriate. I would be very hesitant at this point in time to try to get into an amendment to our sign ordinance.
Okay.
For a variety of reasons, only because it is probably one of the most complex planning issues we will get involved in, probably more controversial and more subject to litigation than our general plans.
I answered that question.
But we can do that, that's what you want.
No. That's a good note for me.
So if you're going to poll on that issue that we just discussed, for social media?
I think social media would be a real good, that's going to be the, your avenue of advertising, so we need to address social media.
Okay, so did you want that just as part of it, looked at, do you want any time limit on it, or just say subject to?
Subject to, or again, to the, to the language used at random?
Okay.
Inspection of those media sites?
Supervisor Tofanelli, if they do get caught, then what?
They're in violation of the ordinance and whatever subject-
Subject to.
Yeah, subject to. If that's revoking their license, it revokes their license.
That would be something that probably go-
And any other criminal, if there's criminally shipping out of state, that's a federal offense to interstate transportation, so.
We could put that under operating restrictions and if they're in violation of that, that would be cause for revocation.
Okay.
And then, this is a pretty easy one, I think, but there was a request to-
Counsel?
Did we poll, we didn't finish the poll?
We didn't poll on that. Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Guaramendi?
Yes.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
And I also agree.
So the district attorney had wanted us to work with her just to make sure that the enforcement provisions will serve both her needs prosecutorially as well as our civil enforcement needs. Any objection to us going back and reworking that language?
Not here.
No objection.
There's a no.
Okay.
No objection or no?
You don't want the district attorney to prosecute?
I have no objections to it, I mean-
Oh, no objection, okay. We're on the same page on that.
Okay. And then the last was just Supervisor Mills had brought up some thoughts about funding mechanisms to ensure cost recovery, and I just wanted to know what the board is recommending in that regard.
Do they already pay license fees? They're by-
Two licenses, they're already cracked. They have dispensary and then the grower license, we just agreed.
Well, those would be state licenses. They would have an administrative or conditional use permit for their operating and accounting requirements. We charge a fee for that. I would love to be able to have the time to go back and revisit our fees and make sure that we're getting better cost recovery than what we're currently doing with our fee structure.
So there's already a fee structure for this?
We, we have fees for use permits and conditional and administrative use permits. I doubt that we would, well, I'd have to go back and look and just see how, you know, the costs associated with the ongoing implementation of this versus how much money we receive for that. We're probably pretty close on the conditional use permit. I would guess that the administrative use permit probably does not, would not cover our costs for the ongoing inspections and investigations if I'd be necessary, so we would need to revisit that.
So this ordinance is already subject-
But that would not necessarily need to be in the ordinance. That's something that would be a separate resolution, fee resolution.
So it, it already exists, we need to update it.
I mean, we could write something in the code that just says that, you know, we will, that a fee to cover the costs of implementing this ordinance shall be adopted by separate resolution.
Mr. Mauer, in our conditional use permits, is there any provision for pollution, environmental violations? Is there a separate clause for that?
We have the ability under state law to recover our costs for mitigation implementation.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that answer.
We could do that.
So.
I had some other ones there you missed.
Okay, go for it.
Go ahead.
1791.070. We're not done yet. I think Supervisor Mills-
We haven't addressed the CUP.
Yeah, that was the other one. So 1791.070. I wanted to poll the board to find out whether they would add a W, which would include some type of a FinCEN or a financial audit to ensure that the record keeping was accurate.
What, what page are you on?
It would be on page 70?
70?
71, I'm sorry, 71. So you've got a V there. I would like to add a W. Knowing what's happened in Sacramento County with dispensaries, this is just one more way of ensuring that we are collecting correctly, that they're reporting correctly, and it's just a mechanism. And FinCEN would probably be the best method that I know of right now. If there's a better way, I mean, I'm open to it.
What was the exact verbiage?
I'll leave that to Supervisor Mills. I'm not familiar with this mechanism, so I mean, I presume that, I know that, I'm sure you can build on what the state has within reason, so we would research whatever it is that Mills is suggesting.
Wikipedia is telling me, since I have an MBA, but I don't know what a FinCEN audit was either. Financial Crimes Enforcement Network is a Bureau of the United States Department, Treasury that collects and analyzes information about financial transactions in order to combat domestic and international money laundering, terrorist financing and other financial crimes. That's a federal program. I don't think we do FinCENs.
Actually, the IRS says we do. So I was just using that as a basis for trying to find a way to audit or have an audit process in place that ensures we don't repeat what happened recently in Sacramento County.
Why are we, if IRS does audits, why are we in auditing a business's books? I can see that it's part of a crime investigation, but are we going to open up the hardware stores' books? I mean, is that our business?
And Maucrisa does have a variety of mechanisms to try to prevent these activities. Again, I'm not familiar enough with how they all work to know how to design a local one, but I'm not saying that that's impossible.
I'd suggest to come back with some type of an auditing mechanism to ensure that the record keeping is being tracked or kept correctly.
All right, I wouldn't, in our office, I don't know that we would have the expertise to be designing that, but we can certainly look at whatever is given to us.
And you're not the one that needs to do it, per se?
I suspect, at least what I was hearing earlier was that Supervisor Mills was asking for language that was essentially that a forensic financial audit from an outside third-party vendor would be done at the dispensary owner's expense. How frequently, that's just when it's applied for, or annually, or what, I'm not, I'm not sure what the desire of the board would be, but at least that was my note was, because quite frankly, I didn't know what FinCEN was either Supervisor Guaramendi, so I just wrote, I assumed that it was some kind of a forensic audit. So I would imagine that we could incorporate some kind of a third-party forensic auditor requirement where the county was submitted the report from the third party.
I think we've got to be really careful about a slippery slope of getting into everybody's business. If you're complying with all of our rules already, I don't know if a company needs to open up their books, because who's next?
I, I have a comment on that, and there's been talk about a forensic analyst slash accountant in our DA's office for this type of crimes, and that's crimes, and we are stepping into a regulatory circle versus a criminal circle, and I would have a tendency to agree with Supervisor Guaramendi that, are we overstepping our boundaries here? Is this too much government?
If there's a crime, I, I, I mean, hey, if we could have the DA look into this, this is great, but we are, we can't assume somebody is creating crimes.
If there is a crime, then granted, we do the investigation, a county forensic investigation, but I think we're just, we're kind of stepping over a line here.
Will this policy call on your, your part?
Comments? Supervisor Clapp?
I'm for it.
Supervisor Mills?
I pulled it up, so I'm for it.
Okay. Supervisor Tofanelli?
Well, I'm, I'm for seeing what is brought back to us, what they craft and bring back to us, and go from there.
We need to know what to craft.
Well, that, that would be up to who's proposing it, I would think. From what I'm hearing, is, he's mentioned what the federal definition of it is. I'm not sure if that's what you want, because I would not be in favor of what the federal definition is. I don't know what you're looking for. You said some type of mechanism, so what is it that you-
I think the cleanest, that's a good question. The cleanest way to do it, I was just using FinCEN as a bounce point, is to look at how was the auditing conducted recently in Sacramento County, by whom? How did they go through that process to determine the non-compliance with the number of dispensaries that they had and the amount of money they lost is taxable income from those dispensaries? And just to be sure that we have some type of a similar mechanism in place here to ensure that we are accurately receiving the correct taxable income that is being reported is correct.
Now, Ms. Steffel read some language that I thought, it doesn't specify this, the mechanism, but is there something wrong with the, the language that she just used, that there will be some sort of forensic third-party audit at the dispensary owner's expense that must be submitted to the county?
Quite honestly, Counsel, I think you've probably got the right tact.
I mean, I just read it from my notes. That was just my take of what you had said earlier.
Can we leave it like that?
I'm in favor of that.
I still, that is the IRS and Franchise Tax Board job. I mean, when we go on, I take that back. I don't do that any longer. But when you go on narcotics investigations, things of that sort, and you have a crime involved, and there's a large amount of assets or cash, IRS is notified and so is the Franchise Tax Board, and they do an independent investigation. That's for criminal. We're talking administrative here. And are we, are we going to step over the line, like I said again, into a company's business thinking they might be dirty? I mean, if they, if they give an indication of a criminal act, and last I learned, last I looked, income tax evasions are criminal act to a certain extent, are we, are we doing the Fed's jobs and the state's jobs? We can't even get our own house in order? I'm having trouble with that.
Okay, it's up to you.
Point of order?
Actually, a point of clarification. I, I, I may be confused, but I thought I heard, you'd see if there was the right amount of books for an order that produced the tax that you were talking about.
Come to the mic, come to the mic.
I was counting the tax.
Come to the mic if she's-
Yeah, you have to come to the mic, ma'am, and if the point of order is procedural, okay?
I'm talking about a clarification.
Well, I'm afraid you can't have any input on the clarification, ma'am. We got to get it clear ourselves. So maybe we might be able to answer your question when we find out what we're doing.
I think you were talking about a tax, the Measure C tax. That's a federal estate.
No, no, we're not talking about, oh, are you talking about the Measure C tax?
Yes, sir. Yes, I was.
Okay. So.
To be sure that the tax that is being collected is correct based upon the information. In other words, is the information that's given to us upon which the tax is based correct?
Does the, does the tax collector currently have that authority?
I have no idea.
Can you call the tax collector and find out? Thank you.
I don't want to be duplication.
We could, we could spend the next two hours on this one. Let's get the right information.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mauer?
I know that you'll get notification from the tax collector if you're not paying the TOT, so I assume they would have the ability to notify anyone who is not paying a local tax for whatever, whatever reason.
I mean, I'm for everybody paying their taxes. I'm just wonder, I just want to be careful before we start jumping into everybody's business on everything.
I would just note, under Measure C, when the state's track and trace program gets up and running in 2018- when the State's track and trace program gets up and running in 2018, it will be converted from, I mean, there is, if we're talking what would be taxed on what was actually grown at the dispensary, that is going to be converted to what is tracked and traced through that program. So I'm not sure, and maybe Supervisor Mills can clarify, what the hope of the forensic audit would bring forward as far as how much is the excise tax of what is sold? Is that what your hope is for Supervisor Mills?
Again, I refer to what happened in Sacramento County recently with the dispensaries, and the number of them that were not turning in the correct amount of tax that they had stated when they paid. So if that's happened in their county, I just want to ensure that we have some way that we can verify that the money that we've collected is correct.
Thank you, Ms., for responding. Mr. Mills, can I interrupt you for a moment? Thank you very much for coming over, Ms. Sullivan.
Sure, I heard something about tax.
Yes, we did. Came running. We're talking about Proposition C taxes, and we're talking about verifying that people are paying their proper amount. And it's, we're discussing a possible audit of businesses to make sure they're doing that. And the question came up, is there a vehicle in place through the tax collector's office to ensure that people are paying their proper tax?
Are you talking the cultivators or the dispensaries?
Talking dispensaries.
Dispensaries, okay. Dispensaries, they report to the State, and they also report to us on that tax. So when they report to them, they're in the system, and they give me that information with their filing. So right now, I haven't gone back and audited it, I take what they provided me, what they provide the State.
Okay.
But there is a point in time, if we do go forward, that I can and am able to go and audit the records if I have to.
You have that authority to do so as tax collector?
Yes, it's in the measure.
Well, maybe that's the solution to the discussion, and if she has the capability of auditing for accuracy, that that by itself solves the problem.
Thank you, you just saved us about an hour.
Well, good.
We don't need to create laws where they already exist.
Should I wait a little bit more? I will.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
I got a dollar here.
So am I understanding that we are not polling on that item anymore?
I don't believe we need a poll.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Sullivan here. What's next?
The last item was AUP, CUP. The last item was AUP, CUP. Are we, are we going to convert all of the current AUPs to CUPs? Or are we going to start splitting? You know, if you're talking about five dispensaries, and that actually happens, there are some under an AUP process. Are you going to continue with that, or are you going to simply grandfather them?
Could you just make sure we understand apples and apples here? Would you compare CUP to AUP?
Okay. Right now, the existing dispensary is under 1791, and this would cover the fourth application that applied before this change in ordinance. So there's possibly four, but currently three dispensaries that would be applying, and it would be the planning director reviewing for compliance and determining whether or not they pass muster. And if the planning director approves, that does not go to the Planning Commission, and it does not go to a public hearing. This being said, the planning director also has the power to revoke an AUP. And then if there was any report or finding of non-compliance, he could send them a revocation notice, there would be a hearing in front of the Planning Commission that would be a public hearing, and the permit could possibly be revoked. He could also refuse to renew, which they could appeal. So those are the mechanisms we have right now. A conditional use.
And just the way, and those actions are appealable, so anything that I do is appealable to the Planning Commission?
Anything he grants or doesn't grant is appealable. The conditional use permit automatically goes to the Planning Commission for review and the possible customization imposition of additional conditions depending on findings of particular, the particular location and what kind of impacts it could have on a case-by-case basis. The planning director is, of course, making those same decisions himself with an AUP, but there is a mandatory public hearing with the, with the CUP. If we were to switch, so the way, the way the Planning Commission recommended, because of the situation where we have three existing vested dispensaries, which is different than the cultivation sites under the urgency ordinance where we had a time limit imposed, we have three current vested dispensaries. And so to avoid issues regarding that, the Planning Commission decided that the new, any new dispensaries coming in after the change in the ordinance would have to have a conditional use permit, but that the existing ones could continue under their current regime, especially since these permits were subject to annual renewal. So that's what they decided, to help avoid some of the more complicated research that needs to be done to amortize an existing vested use.
So just so I'm clear, so the folks that already have their permit stay the course, and then any new ones would go under a CUP?
That's what the Planning Commission recommended.
And those existing dispensaries are operating under an AUP, right?
Under an AUP.
But they wouldn't be required to upgrade to a CUP?
That's up to you, however, it's a little bit more complicated for the ones that are pre-existing. And that we would have to, there are some things we might need to research and do and make that a slow amortized process. The Planning Commission was content to allow it to stay the way it is after hearing from the sheriff.
Okay, discussion? Supervisor Toffenelli, lights on? Anything?
It was on, when you're saying that, you're saying we would, we could say that the existing ones can continue, but by 2020, we will be at a CUP?
We could do something along those lines.
Or 2019, or whatever.
You could. And there would have, we'd have to research how the mechanism would work.
Scenario, existing dispensary under an AUP, has the AUP revoked?
The AUP goes through a renewal process.
Okay, let's say, let's say.
If they remain in compliance, we reissue it. If we find that they're out of compliance, then we would either revoke it prior to its renewal date, or when it comes time for the renewal, you know, during our, our investigation, our inspection, we could choose to not renew it, and they would then have the right to appeal that decision.
And if they take it through the appeal process and lose, they would have to apply to a CUP then, right? Not their pre-existing AUP?
Well, if they were to have their permit revoked.
We probably wouldn't issue.
They would have, we probably wouldn't issue, there'd be a reason why it was revoked, we probably wouldn't reissue a permit. It might open the door for someone else to apply because of the five, you know, the cap of five.
The new folks would require a CUP.
Right.
I think we, we have provisions in our code that if you're denied a permit, you have to wait at least a year to reapply, they could conceivably reapply. But if they were, say, revoked because of a background check issue, that probably wouldn't change things. You know, it's conceivable that they may have been revoked because of non-compliance with something, and they can demonstrate that they can be in compliance, we could conceivably reissue it.
Yeah, I should, I should clarify, it's not necessar, the AUP, the use permit does go with the site. So it's the operator, but it's also the site, so it might be a little bit more complicated than just say.
That's what I was kind of wondering, yeah.
These are transferable interests, these three existing ones.
The use permit typically runs with the land.
So we're talking about new dispensaries, correct?
So, so the commission felt that any new dispensary, and if for some reason any one of these were to close down, that would eliminate that use permit, the administrative use permit, anyone new coming in either at that location or somewhere else would have to go through a conditional use permit process. So it was a way to recognize that these people have been operating under the existing codes and so far, operating in compliance with the law, that they should be able to continue to operate, just as any other sort of grandfather type of operation. But anything new coming in would need to go through a use permit and meet the new standards that are in place.
Understand.
And operating restrictions that are applied that don't take away any of the vested right that they may have would also apply. So for example, the heightened background check requirements for any new employee that might come on, that would apply to any of the existing dispensaries.
Supervisor Mills?
No, I agree with Supervisor Toffenelli, I'd like to see it worked in over time. And if you're picking a date, you know, but I think staff would be better able to tell us how that process would work, if that's what we're going to go in. But I would like to see all of them in the same situation and not be segregated out one way or the other over time.
Supervisor Geramendi?
Yeah, I support what the Planning Commission suggested. I don't think it's fair to go back to a company that's been operating and has not broken any rules and has been a good operator and say, now you've got to go through this whole permitting process again under a CUP. I just don't think that's fair to business. And, but certainly going forward, or if somebody gets their permit revoked, yeah, we go into a CUP situation. For the existing three dispensaries, it just doesn't strike me as matter of fairness.
So you're, you would be against a time limit to come up to a CUP?
Can I, can I say this?
Sure.
That under the CUP, if we phase in a CUP, even to the existing ones, once they get to the CUP level, then they're not automatically every year having to go through the process of going through and being redone through the planning department yet for a reissue of an AUP. The CUP would put, would be through a public process and put any conditions on them. And going forward, correct me if I'm not wrong, it wouldn't be a yearly thing, event.
We do not, we, we have written into it an annual inspection requirement, which essentially provides us the opportunity to review that. With use permits that we have today, we, once it's issued, it is issued more or less in perpetuity as long as they are operating that use that's been permitted and they're not in violation of any of the terms of that permit.
There's still an annual renewal fee.
Well, hold on, so other use permits that are issued do not typically go through a review unless we have complaints against it, then we look at it. In this case, we've actually written into an annual review process that they need to, that we review it, now it's twice a year, to ensure compliance. So it is, you can put a sunset clause into a use permit, and that requires them to come back and renew it. That's not something we do here for other types of permits. Other counties have done that for other types of use permits. There are, my understanding of what the commission recommended was that the initial permit would be a conditional use permit, full public hearing. We would review that for renewal, sort of conformance, compliance request, without going back to a full public hearing every year on that. Unless we receive complaints or identified violations, and then we would not renew it or revoke it, which, in which case, would then go to the commission for revocation.
So I'm reading seventeen point nine one point zero eight zero, term renewal. Says, "Any permit issued pursuant to this chapter shall automatically expire after one year after date of issuance, and on the anniversary of such issuance each year thereafter, unless an annual compliance inspection has been conducted by code compliance and the planning department." So that's where I was reading annually, I don't know if you are annually going out, physically out to their premises and with code and doing an annual complete inspection of their facility in order to renew their permit.
That is what we do.
I was saying, you are, you are actually doing that?
Yes.
Otherwise, if you don't do that, it terminates. And under a CUP, if we grant them under a normal CUP, we, it's not under that provision normally, unless, I guess, we could make it that.
Well, that's why we've written that into this section.
Okay, but I was going by an AUP, because that's what it was referring to, because you didn't have any CUPs issued, only AUPs. So when we were changing to a CUP.
Well, we originally had any AUP issued, but because the board or the commission added both, we just had any permit, so it applied to both the AUP and the CUP.
Okay, okay, that clarified it, all right.
Okay, better understanding?
Yeah, my only concern is, once again, the slippery slope of us overstepping. I think that you could always, as a business, say, I've got an AUP, gee, I really want to go get a CUP and go through the process for whatever benefits there may be. I just hate to take away some of these rights when they're already vested.
Board Chair, I would just note, if, if the board does direct staff to essentially amortize it into a CUP, that you allow staff to look into how much time that amortization should be, because I know that there are current existing cases against other jurisdictions on the length of amortization. So, so I would recommend that you not give an actual timeframe as far as, you know, three, five years. Allow us to look into that and, and bring back what we feel would be defensible based on the other cases that are existing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry. Before that, one, two.
I'm for that, too.
Three. I'll go for one.
I think that's it, unless there's any other issues that.
Want to make sure.
The board member got it.
Silence is golden.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Sullivan. Any other issues on this particular item? This is going to be sent, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We're just going to, we're going to send this back to staff with the board's recommendations and direction, and you'll be bringing this back to us, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, if you could just allow us to bring it back to you, I don't know that we have a rush on this, there's no deadline, we don't have an expiration coming. If we could just bring this back when we are able to get to it sometime in the next month or two, that would be ideal.
You need sixty days, Counsel? You've got the holidays coming up.
I think if everything else on our plate right now, I mean, we could set a date certain, but it would be just as easy at this point in time to renotice it when, when we have it prepared and brought back up. Given all the other things on our agenda, I would hate to have an agenda stacked with this item as well, and, you know, we could play with the, the date.
As long as you can bring it back within a hundred and twenty days, I think that's probably, we don't want this going to the crimes.
We can, we can handle that outer limit.
Can you handle that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, staff.
So then I would recommend or suggest that a motion be to continue this off-calendar with the direction of the staff to bring it back, and have that as a motion.
I would entertain such a motion. Move by Supervisor Clapp, second by Supervisor Mills? Any public comment on this? Already had it. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for a vote. All in favor in the cap are saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed in the cap are saying no. Motion carries five, zero, unanimous. Madam Clerk, when you're ready?
Public comment continued. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the allotted thirty-minute time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So that's what we're doing today. We had our thirty minutes of general public comment yesterday, and this is for the general public comment that was not heard yesterday.
Any speaker, sir? How many speakers do we have on public comment? One, two, three, you better change, we'll take a ten-minute break.
I got a one.
Yeah.
Because country, you need a four o'clock.
What's that? Do you really? I'll get you out of here.